Ahead with it, $1,000 to go forward with the RFP. And I'm estimating we spent about $50,000 to date. The members who've already gone through it have already paid those costs, so there's no back allocation of them. So we have maybe $150,000 to get us through the remaining negotiation with the different vendors, the evaluations. So Richlands would only pay a portion of that, maybe 6% to 8% of that, depending on what other members also decide to participate in this. I really encourage you to think strongly about this RFP and if you want to participate. As Garrett said, there are very few ways to control your transmission costs. They've been going up for quite a while now, and we've really looked at what other ways we can do to, you know, what we can do to help control these costs, and there just aren't a lot of good other options. So putting some type of distributed generation on your system is going to be one of the most effective ways to help rein in those costs, to put some level of control there. And as Garrett noted, you really do get slammed by those winter peaks. You know, among the Blue Ridge members, there's no one else who sees their load double from the winter transmission peaks to the summer. So it's particularly painful for Richlands. The other thing I'd encourage you to think about is I think it'll be quite a while before we're doing another battery RFP like this. So we have almost two years, you know, before we expect to have these batteries in operation. It would probably be another couple of years after that before we decided to have another one, before we had enough interest across the members. So now is a really great time to be thinking about this and deciding if you wanted to go forward with the RFP. Just because you participate in the RFP doesn't mean you would be committed to actually signing a contract. Once we go through the negotiations with the developers, each community would make their decision at that point if they wanted to actually subscribe to the project to be part of it. So you'd have a chance to make a final decision later on. And I guess I didn't mention it, we're going to get proposals in, I think they're due November 1st approximately. And then once we have the proposals in, we'll narrow that down to a shortlist. So it'll be about that early November, mid-November timeframe that we would need a firm decision on all the communities that wanted to be a part of it. And that's the point that we would have to be talking about where the specific sites are. Once we get to that shortlist of vendors, we would be sending them out to the communities to actually look at the site, look at the systems, and then give us their best and final offers. So we have a little time, but not a lot, to think about. Questions?
Idea. So, thank you very much, first for coming. And I remember you were on Zoom, and now you're here. It's good to see people.
It is.
Now, what were the communities, the members who are participating or are doing, participating in the RFPs right now in the association? What are they?
Salem.
Salem.
Radford.
Okay.
Virginia Tech.
Alright.
And Craig Bottatot Electric Cooperative.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure that council will want to consider this. We meet, I think it's October the 14th, is that our next meeting? Is that it? I think, anyway, the second Tuesday. Would that, if council say decides, would that be enough time to notify you that we want to participate in the RFP?
That would be yes.
President Thomas of the Essence Union mentioning November said we'll be knocking on the door of November. But I just wanted to make sure for us that we're all in line with what, and working with you.
Yeah, October is great.
Thank you. Any members of council have questions?
We wouldn't really know. At what point would we have a better idea as far as potential savings or how much of the cost was, would that be after the RFP?
Well, do you want to answer that?
I can. So, we're gonna be moving to the shortlist by December, and presuming you all participate. You know, that would be the time where we can begin to provide the first set of numbers on what to expect in the way of savings and dollars based on specific sizes. This is a rough cut on the screen right now. It gives you a sense of it, and of course, that would support the information. Again, come December, I think we could share that information.
Will the size of the electric system determine how large of a battery system you will need?
That's right. The size of the loading at any given substation for the town would determine how much we could absorb in that load, because we don't inject power back out onto the transmission grid. We have to stay underneath of the load shapes at the substation. So that'll, it's a great point. That'll help to, you know, drive what sizing we can consider.
Have you done any studies or have any experience in knowing what maintenance cost might be? For, let's say, this battery for recharging and other things?
Yeah, appreciate that question. As Alice mentioned, this is, would be a lease that we're looking at, not an ownership situation. So the operations and maintenance are baked in to the proposal. And for that reason, you know, the suppliers, we actually negotiate guarantees for what level of overall sufficiency of capacity over time or degradation exists, which means they have a heavy incentive to provide proper O and M during the period. But they're the provider of the O and M, not us. The other part of your question was related to, you know, energy and, you know, losses and whatnot. And those are fairly minuscule in the comparison to the kind of dollars we're talking about on a broader project. So there's some small piece, and we've certainly seen that. But energy, sort of losses are a pretty small portion of that.
So this is showing 15 years, is that what, I'm guessing, unless we're talking about years as far as the lease?
That's a 15-year lease, I think is what he said, right?
15.
What would you do at the end of that lease?
They would pack it up and take it away.
And then we could figure out if we wanted to keep or do it again, I guess?
Do it again, or they can renegotiate with us and say, oh, we think there's more useful life. And we can say, we do or do, don't want to continue. But the result of the agreement would be, they pack it up and they dispose of it properly. There is a, I'd say about a 5% of the capital cost of battery storage is at the end of life to actually transport it and dispose of it. So we'd negotiate credit arrangements to ensure that at the end of the useful life, they would, you know, still be held responsible for taking it off-site should we not choose to continue.
In 15 years, a battery would be about that size with technology, it'll be, that'll be obsolete, so you wouldn't have to worry too much about it.
That's our thinking, is that, you know, the shortest term we could commit to and still get a competitive price is the way we would think about what we would be looking at in 15 years is, you know, really that shorter end. Batteries can have a useful life up to 20 years at a utility grade level. So we would choose to be on the shorter end of that.
So let me ask you this question. This is a hard question. Give me, give me a scenario where we would take a loss.
Yeah. So a scenario where we would take a loss might be if predicting the peaks becomes more challenging than we might understand today, or it might be spread over more hours than the duration that we signed up for. So you see examples there on the screen of two, three, and four hours. And today, we think that even two and three hours are reasonable for, you know, sort of that key portion of the NPV period. So when you're thinking in net present value terms, you're definitely thinking, I want to make my money in the first seven years. Okay, so we're thinking that there's a really strong, really strong support for making the money back for break even in those years and moving. Yeah, and moving on to payback, that would be essentially, as we showed, double that over the course of 15. So a scenario where there could be challenges is if there's greater penetration of solar more quickly in the market, as an example, or even battery storage, where the peak period is elongated in the later portion of the day. Now, we don't necessarily see that happening in the next five to seven years, because it takes a while to develop solar resources on the grid. You know, they're, especially in the time we're in, it's taking even longer. But that would be a scenario where you could potentially have to derate your capacity and not make as much money. So again, we're thinking about payback on a five to seven basis. You need to be in that sweet spot to ensure that we make our money and then we're saving extra as we go down the curve.
Following up on his question, if technology catches up and it becomes obsolete before, say, 10 years, are there a buyout clause or anything like that you're working on?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's always the tricky part of when do we choose to invest in something that helps us avoid cost, right? The answer is, in five years, it will definitely be a technology that's behind the times, no doubt about it. So, but the question is, how long are we gonna wait and not avoid the cost, you know, when we're seeing increase after increase and we need that mitigation? So I think the answer is, we need to determine a point at which we see sizable enough savings over the first seven to 10 years that we say, look, it's at a point now where we can, for every dollar we spend, we get $2 of potential benefit. That's pretty sizable. And in future years, that may change, but we also have to take into account that, well, if we wait another five years, we have to pay all those transmission charges. So I appreciate the question, because it is kind of a right size of technology question. If things are still continuing down on a slope that's so rapid, then maybe you would delay for a future date. But it's more of an exponential curve that is starting to, you know, find its way to lower and lower percentages each year. And so, to me, when you look at the net present value of waiting versus starting now, there's benefit to going ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean delay. I mean, if you participate, and say we go with it in November.
Yeah.
Okay, the technology over, comes in seven, eight years.
Yeah.
That makes what we're doing at this time obsolete. Do we have a buyout clause that we can buy out and do something else?
Yeah. Appreciate that thought. It's the tricky part. You know, any investor that has to go and procure a battery and sell it to you under some fixed margin had to go buy it at the price they had to buy it when they offered it to you.
Right.
And that's, we can't get them out of that. And so therefore, we can't get out of that commitment. Now, that doesn't mean we have a capital commitment upfront. We're doing a lease. But we do, we are committed to our payment series over the term. So we won't be able to get out of that payment series early. So it is a right size on timing, but to the point that I was making earlier, feels like we're at a great timing, because we're making double the benefits that we are in the cost. And if we wait longer, which is the only other way to look at it, then you're giving up those potential avoidances.
What's the comfort level of making a dollar in that benefit at this point?
Yeah, the comfort level's pretty good, pretty high for that estimate. We show what, .8 to .1.1 on the delta there? So, I mean, pretty close to a dollar net benefit on the range. Did you have a comment?
Just gonna add on to your answer to Michael's question about the, if we were a loss scenario, just to point out that you would be in the same boat as the other Blue Ridge members who are all trying to shave that very expensive AAP transmission peak. So we have a lot of incentive to make sure we get it right. And we will be having a third party, you know, looking at those peaks and forecasting them for us to try to do everything we can to get those, because everybody's gonna be in the same boat in wanting to hit that peak and shave it. So definitely something that's worth putting the resources towards.
Yeah, Richlands isn't on their own, is a strong point.
So the RFP, you said, what happens on RFPs, mid-November?
It's already been issued. And what we're talking about is the opportunity to bring other Blue Ridge members in. You all aren't the only one. When Alice was sharing the costs, I think she was given a perspective on what it might be today if you participated. But there's one other large Blue Ridge member that I'm expecting will likely participate, and that would, you know, potentially diminish your cost even further on the RFP side. So the RFP's already solicited. The question is, do you want to participate in, you know, seeing that information and potentially citing storage here once you learn more about it?
We would have our members in December, is that correct? Better number?
Yep, I think that's fair. When you all wanted to establish a council meeting.
And then, and then when would we decide if we want to be a part?
Well, we would need to establish site opportunities going into January. Can you continue with this process? And I think the decision on when to move forward or not is in that April, May type timeframe. So I'll call it April 1 for a target, but could be, you know, in those couple of months.
So at this point, like, what is really the risk at this point?
There's no risk for participation until you get to that point and decide, are we in? And you'll have that autonomy to decide that. The upfront benefit is the economies of participating with others who are, have significant size advantage overall.
But if we say we are interested, there's the cost for being a part of the RFP, correct? And that'd be about $10,000 to $12,000, depending on who else participates.
That's right.
So we'll be paying for the further information.
You'd be paying to be a part of it, to have your sites thrown in the mix, to have them priced, all of that kind of thing. And for Richlands, to just being honest, it's a great opportunity to participate with the others. Alice is right. I mean, we could be three years later before we go back through this process where you have this number of participants. I mean, it's a weighty challenge to go and do this on your own or even with one or two others. So in this case, I think you're gonna have four or five other partners in this in Virginia. That's significant.
I appreciate that, and your questions are excellent, and I appreciate council asking. And I'm just trying to think, the benefit of belonging to AMP is collective, and this is just an obvious extension to me of being part of the collective, if I may say. And the numbers who do ultimately participate, we can enjoy the benefits of, when I say collective buying, power of buying. That's my, 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 I appreciate your questions. Richard, I believe Richard has something he'd like to ask.
We've had a lot of conversation about this, but have you looked at the substation and see if we have the 10,000 square feet?
Well, I guess first, I'll help you, John, on the front end. It doesn't have to be 10,000 square feet and 10 megawatts. You know, we're gonna have members of Blue Ridge participate that are looking at 2 megawatts. So it could be 2,000, 2,500 square feet, so I'll leave the rest to...
But this is, this is based on the 10,000, correct?
These economics are based on the 10,000? 10,000 kilowatts, 10 megawatts? But when you, when you have a lot of Blue Ridge members participate at the same time, these numbers, we expect to hold up, even if you're at the 2, 2 and 1/2 megawatt level.
I guess the percentages would scale, either you're, you know, less, if so, the same percentage return.
I know the substation is pretty packed, I mean...
I know. I always asked that question by somebody from our election department today. And their question was, you know, do we have to put it inside? You know, we don't really have the space inside, but I would assume it's something that can be installed outside or around that facility within the fence. But it would be something we'd have to look at and figure out exactly how much we need and then see what space we have there.
Yeah.
We do have some space out there. I just, we'd have to kind of configure it.
I think we need to get an idea on that before we commit to doing this, to see if it's gonna work before we commit to the RFP.
And does it have to be at the substation?
No, it doesn't have to be at the substation, but it takes away from the economics if you have to run a line. And it's not to say that that's not helpful. I've served many entities that ran a line to these types of resources and still benefited. But it would be more helpful if it were right at the sub.
I appreciate the question, Richard. I too was thinking where the substation is and how tight it already is. And the only way I could think it was in blocks of 2,000, and I think five houses of 2,000 square feet. How big is that gonna be? And do we have the space? So that is also a very good question. Thank you. And thank you for explaining about what this is based on and the economics of trying to have it there. I appreciate that. Any other questions from members of council? John, do you have anything else you'd like to ask or add?
I don't. I guess, is there interest from the board? If there is, we will put on the agenda for our next council meeting for a more formal decision. And I'll look at the area we have over there at the substation to kind of see where, if it's feasible to do it there, or what we'd have to do to make it work.
I think, I speak for myself as the mayor, but I think it's always good to explore. So I think it definitely should be on the agenda, but I will defer to council for their opinion.
I wouldn't want to commit to an RFP until we saw that there's actually room or what the cost is gonna be for that.
Well, that's what he's saying, I think, Richard. He's gonna see about...
He's gonna have that prior to the October 12 meeting.
Yeah, so we'll have, is it the 12th? I didn't know, whatever. Yes, you're gonna supply some of the information to the council, is that right, John?
Yeah, I'll work on trying to get that.
Space available and other points of interest that council has expressed.
I think this was one of the items we felt had the most promise. You know, we've got three other we're gonna talk about tonight. So if you want to wait to go, we go through all three and pick one or two, we can do that. Or if this is one you feel pretty good about, you're moving forward with, have a further discussion on, we can definitely add it to next month's agenda.
We have, I misunderstood. I don't understand it. We have three other...
Three, like, we were gonna talk about solar.
Oh, okay.
The PCA, you, four things total, but we can't move forward all of them. You know, if council would like to wait to the end and then say, okay, these are the two that we think have the most promise that we want to look at further.
That's a good idea. That's a very good idea. Okay. Council?
Yeah, we'll just listen to the rest of it, I guess.
Yeah, we need to hear it all, yeah.
Okay. One last question. I mean...
Sure.
That's based on 10 megawatts?
It is, yes.
Okay, so if you done like a 2 megawatt, which is more in line with Richlands, we're talking about 400,000?
Of overall benefit? Yeah, it would be still, our estimate right now is that it would still be sort of a 2 to 1 type ratio, because it won't be just you going in for those units. It will be you plus all the other megawatts that are going in. Our RFP states right now that I think we have on the order of three different participants that are interested in 10, and one that's interested in 2, 3, 4. So, I mean, we're looking at a total of 32 to 34 megawatts out of the gate with 2-hour duration or 3-hour duration. So that's between, what, 60 and 90 megawatt hours right there? So there's a, the economies are there, I believe, to hold this piece steady. The details will be when we see the RFP and get the actual quotes. But my hope is that your 2, 2 and 1/2 megawatt unit would still be held on that larger economy of scale level.
Our size would be 2 to 4 mags, right?
Yeah, it'd be in that range, depending upon how much can fit at the substation. We'll take a closer look at that. It's also interdependent with another topic here that we'll talk about as well. Good thought.
Thank you, council.
Solar is the, solar is another topic here. And, you know, just being straightforward, the topography here in Richlands and, you know, no sort of flat land available for solar sort of rules out the ability to have that at scale on your distribution system. So we're talking about interconnected solar here, and that means connected to the transmission grid, not connected to your distribution system. So that limits some of the benefits that you can have from solar, but I think that's really the, one of the only pathways to solar at scale for the town. This item is not as imminent, to John's point about selecting between different ones. If I talked about interconnected solar, I would say this is still some time down the line. But I'm expecting that Blue Ridge may consider this as a group at some point in the future here and call that the next 12, 18, 24 months. So this is an interesting option. You can see that prices are coming down, and this can provide a hedge for on-peak energy prices that Richlands pays, as well as a hedge for PJM capacity. Note, it does not provide transmission avoidance, because it is not on your distribution system. So, you know, the drawbacks of interconnected solar are just that, you know, it's not cited on your system to avoid transmission. And they're, you know, given that it takes 8 to 10 acres for 1 megawatt of solar, that gives you an idea that it's harder to cite here locally. And we'd be looking for a joint site among a number of participants to cite solar. Makes sense? So this is an option that I think is valuable for you all as we move down the curve, but it's not one that immediately we could say, oh, let's proceed with that option. It's probably one for a future conversation.
I will add, we have had at least one company reach out with interest in doing some solar, but it feels something we were to look at, allowing them to do. We'd probably have to go through the whole RFP proposal. And I have spoken to GDS about reviewing any proposals that would come to us to make sure that, you know, we don't look into or go after anything that, long-term, isn't, you know, gonna be as beneficial as we may think it is or as it's presented. So if somebody does, you know, mention to you that, you know, we have been approached by a company that would like to do solar here in town, because it's not, you know, scalable, as you said, it's not something that we've really pursued heavily at this point.
Thank you.
That's a good point, John. Thanks. Third, a third option here that we've talked about before is your diesel unit, your existing diesels. We've talked about the fact that these units could be used for peak shaving purposes if brought into environmental compliance. And we've talked about the investment that's required in order to operate that. And I understand that, you know, that type of operating cash investment could be a challenge in terms of just sort of fronting the money. An alternative option to put on your radar screen for consideration is there are other Virginia cities that have had developers come in and bring a generating unit or battery storage unit, and they put it in for no capital cost, and they share the savings that that utility gets behind the meter on its distribution system associated with avoided transmission and capacity. And that type of option could work for your diesel unit by offering to sell that unit to someone with an in-return shared savings agreement. And in that case, if capex is the issue on the front end in terms of operating cash to front that investment, then you could back into that and avoid the investment and have some developer come in and share the savings with you and potentially take care of the upgrades on your behalf. So that's something we would have to investigate, but there, it's not as if this is just a creative concept. This has actually been done in Virginia with other cities. So I think it would be worthwhile to consider it. Whether it works out or not, you know, depends on the developer interest at that point, right? But I think it would be worthwhile to consider. I'll also point out that we need to consider the intertwining points that were being made earlier on sizing. You know, if you think this is an option worthy of considering, it also interplays with storage in terms of how much you can use to avoid on your substation load at any given point in time. So if we were evaluating storage and we also evaluated this as we moved through the process, and by the time we reached a decision point, say in April, we would need to bring these two together and decide what's in the best benefit of the town on these options. Would it be to have some investor come in and help us shave with the diesel? Or would it be battery storage? Or would there be a combination of those two? But you've got to be sure that you have enough room to avoid the load on your substation. So again, you know, the same request here is in play in terms of how much room is available on your substation and loading, and that would be worthwhile to look at. But this is another option. So let me open it up for questions here, recognizing there's been some discussion about the challenge of upfront investment. Any questions here?
I think I asked you back when you were here before about Central Medical Center. They're the largest user of electricity in the town. And I think we had discussed before back under Mr. Taylor that, I don't know if you remember that or not, but we were using or trying to use their diesel generator as an offset to shave some of this.
Mm-hmm. I seem to recall that Tim had mentioned that to me before. I don't have the details of the conversation fully, but, you know, sometimes medical facilities are a little reluctant to run their facilities for any other use than their local use. But I wonder.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think that Tim had spoken to the CEO and corporate, and they had, was interested in... They had, was interested in maybe working with us with that to add another generator to this.
Okay, okay. So for their own use, but also with shared benefit?
Shaving.
Okay, okay. Well, that's worth, you know, investigating if, if it's, you know, if they think that's a bona fide potential.
What's the unit?
The existing unit? It's driven by the, the series of the dollars that can be saved from it. I think, I think the, the existing, I don't think you'd get somebody coming in to, to say, oh, I'll pay you a bunch of money for your existing diesel unit. I think they're gonna say, well, how much is the capex that's involved? And then to upgrade it, and then we'll decide what sharing arrangement. So I think you have to be, you know, creative on the front end by saying, no, we've figured out it's worth this much. So we'll offer you this shared savings approach if you come in and pay for the capex to upgrade it. So you kinda have to be a little more heavy-handed on the front end, right? Because you know what value you have. Otherwise, just one developer coming in, yeah, they might, they might try to haggle you down on that. I think you gotta offer what you want on this, two or three different providers, first one that kinda jumps at your. Your offerings and has the right credibility, so. Yeah, it's not, not that easy, no. These, we're, we're marketing other units like this for other clients. It can be challenging. So, um, but I say that in the context of trying to just sell it and let it go. You know, the, the value proposition is to have somebody come in and actually get the, get the financial benefits over time.
What you're saying, it's not worth anything. What's the worth is what it can save, the savings. It's, it's just like a piece of land. It's not worth anything unless it's bringing in income.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that it's not worth anything, but it's very difficult to find the market for just selling it and cutting it loose. The greatest value of the asset is in seeing what the upgrade costs actually are to have it running. And getting those longer-term savings benefits. That, I, I can tell you pretty easily that that will be the highest NPV, um, option. So that's what we'd be talking about here, but trying to defray you all from having to front the capital and the risk. Associated with that, trying to bring a partner to the table that took that risk. So that's another, another option there. So three, three key options that we've talked about so far. We've talked about the battery storage through the Blue Ridge RFP process that's already in motion. We've talked about interconnected solar and the fact that, you know, looking at solar at scale on your system is, is not possible. Uh, as much as we would like to be able to do it. There may be other small-scale solar that, uh, that John alluded to. Uh, but at scale, it'd be grid interconnected, and that'll be a few years away. And then the possible use of these diesels, and I appreciate the, the mention of the hospital as well as another, another factor. So with that, um, we have a new section getting into the power cost adjustment. And are there any questions on the resource opportunities for mitigation of cost? Okay, bearable.
All right, uh, thank you again. Just quick introduction, I'm Jake Thomas with GDS. And I was here with Garrett back in May and glad to be back again and, and see some faces. Um, I am gonna change direction a little bit, so if you recall, um, what I presented back in May. Was the results of the, the retail rate study and the cost of service study. So whereas Garrett and Alice have been talking about power supply costs and options for managing our costs. Um, I'm gonna kinda refresh a little bit on this idea of a power cost adjustment factor and how it relates to rate design. So now we're gonna focus on how do we recover those costs once they're incurred, essentially. And then John also asked me to, um, kinda introduce some thoughts about net metering policies. So I've got, I've got some very high-level information about what other utilities, um, both in Virginia, but also nationwide are doing with respect to. Uh, how to handle, you know, retail net metering, although it's not necessarily a big issue here yet. We wanted to go ahead and start laying the groundwork for thinking about a policy perhaps. So on the, uh, the PCA piece, I've got kinda just some, um, some reminder slides. So a lot of this comes from what we talked about in May to help set the stage. Um, but if you recall, uh, the, we, we've already been talking a lot about the AEP transmission costs. And for Richlands, if that peak occurs in the winter or the summer, it has a huge impact on us. Uh, if it's a summer demand, the cost can be as much as a million dollars less than if it's a winter demand for us. And so in terms of planning for the future, uh, we assumed the worst-case scenario. So we assume those winter demands would be what drive costs. And that's what kinda drove the, the, the rate increases that we presented over a four- or five-year plan back in May. So it was kinda that high-case scenario of if it was always in the winter. And as part of that, one of the things that we recognize is that the, the, the current PCA factor that's in place. And, and by PCA, you know, power cost adjustment, the idea of the power cost adjustment, it's a portion of the bill. That's designed to flow through additional cost to power cost relative to what we kinda have built into our base rates already. So our base rates are designed to recover a certain amount of power cost. And if the power costs are under your current PCA, um, policy, if they're, if the power costs are higher. It can be an additional charge added to the bill to help make sure we recover those. Um, some of the, some of the challenges with that is that it's an, it's an annual factor. Um, so it's not very flexible. It's not able to respond to changes in prices quickly. Uh, and the, and so the process to respond to changing power costs can be kinda slow. And so one of the things that we kinda talked about, uh, or at least hinted at in May. Is that if we had a more formulary type of a PCA factor that could be adjusted, uh, so, at some frequency more than a year. Uh, would that help us manage some of this? We might not have to raise the base rates quite as much and assume that worst-case winter scenario going forward. Okay. Um, and again, just by way of, of summary, this was information I presented to you that just showed, um. The, the rate increases that we were expecting over the next four years without any kind of a PCA factor. So if the, if the PCA just kinda, is not there, th, this is really essentially what we would expect, um, customers' bills to be. Under those, those winter AEP cost scenarios. And we had looked at it both with and without the pilot, and we, we kinda talked through that. But again, some, some significant cumulative rate increases over time. And when we talked about the residential class, uh, it looked something like this. Where we had a plan to raise the rates from a nine-dollar and ninety cent per month customer charge. And a ten-point-four cent energy charge up to a fifteen-cent energy charge by twenty-twenty-five. So pretty significant increases. And again, mostly driven by that winter peak assumption on the AEP. Now, the, the good news is, is if we pursue some of these opportunities that, that they've been talking about tonight. And we're successful at managing some of those costs, the cost will come down. And that'll, that'll help allow us to, you know, maybe not have to raise these rates quite as much if we can manage our, our transmission cost. So that's why it was kinda good for Garrett to, to lead off with, here are ways to try to manage this cost. In our rate design, we've assumed we're not able to do that yet, and so this is, this again is kind of our worst-case scenario.
That's about a thirty percent increase.
In, in the energy part of the bill, that's correct.
That's within. Four years.
That's right. The, the cumulative, let me look at the screen here. Right, thirty, thirty percent over four years. And, and what we had mentioned again, um, was that the PCA itself is kinda slow to respond to these price changes. And that, that GDS would recommend maybe approving kind of a formulary process where the PCA could be automated. Uh, and it would be just calculated and flow through the bills. And what I would like to do is really kinda focus on this slide for a couple minutes and provide the council with some thoughts about. What that might do, because in rate design, anything we decide to do tends to have trade-offs. And so some of the different trade-offs and some of the different elements you might think about. I, I'm not here tonight with an actual, like, recommended PCA formula for you because there's a lot of different things that we might think about. But instead, I'd like to provide more information, so if the council would like us to, to take a harder look at this, we can do that and, and get with John and look at it. Um, usually when you're, when you're thinking about these types of formulary factors, these are some of the things you have to think about. Uh, they can be either backward-looking or forward-looking. You can look at historical costs. And how does the factor recover those historical costs? Or you can try to do projected costs and try to recover the cost ahead of time or in real time, and then have an adjustment. And, and so those have different implications on your, the utility's cash flows. Uh, you know, it depends on if we're in a, in a, a period right now where costs are increasing rapidly, then a backward look. Uh, means that we're gonna recover the actual cost more slowly, right? We're looking back a year, costs are increasing pretty significantly, and so we're, we're a one- or two-year lag in recovering those costs. Um, whereas in a projected power cost, we might be able to project it and do a better job. But then you need to have some kind of a factor in there to, to, uh, make sure you adjust to actual. Cause you, you know, you, you, what you wanna do is make sure you actually ultimately recover the true power cost.
Question, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Um, okay, we're assured of a thirty percent increase. Okay, with PCA or power cost adjustment, it could go as high as fifty percent, possibly?
Well, I would say a couple things, uh, you're not, well, unless you voted on the entire rate schedule already. Then you're not assured of a thirty percent increase. The thirty percent increase is our projection of what's gonna happen. Um, we're starting to look at options for managing that cost, and if we're successful with that, it will be less than thirty percent. Because again, most of those cost increases were driven by that AEP's transmission cost. The, that thirty percent will, if it comes true, will be recovered from the bills. What we're talking about is we might can recover some of that through a different mechanism than just the base charge itself. So by adopting a PCA, you're not necessarily adding on additional cost to the bills. You're gonna recover some of that cost through that factor as opposed to that fifteen-cent charge.
But if you, uh, if we vote a three-year increase, we're assured of the thirty percent increase. And that PCA will be added on to that, uh, if.
Now, you can, that, that, well, to the extent, if power cost came in even higher than the thirty percent that we've projected. Then, then a formula, yes, would create an additional bill increase, but it's because our costs have gone up. Now, most PCA factors also allow for a credit mechanism back through. Where you could have a factor that would, if your power cost came in below what you've projected, there would be a credit. And so if our, if we had built in a three-year plan for a thirty percent increase, power cost came in. Hey, we only needed a twenty percent increase, then that factor, that formula could work to where the ten percent could come back through as credits on the bill.
I've never seen a government give anything back.
Well, you would have.
I don't think it's reasonable to say that we would be expecting here today for more than thirty percent. Um, if you move on base rates and with PCA, I don't, I don't think that would be a reasonable assumption.
Right, they're, that's right. This, yeah, that's a good point. It's not intended to be additive. Um, and what, what the council would do is would approve a process in place. So you'd be approving a formula that once that formula is approved, if there, if there does need to be, if we have an over-collection. It could flow back down, it could flow back as a credit through the bill. Um, so it's, it's not like every time that there needs to be a credit, you would actually have to approve, okay, we're gonna now. Credit back a hundred thousand dollars through the bills. You would approve the entire process, the accounting behind it, and then that's, your, your governance would be to govern the accounting of how it's calculated and how it works. It's kinda the idea.
Uh, I appreciate your explaining that and the questions. Uh, they're probing, but we're trying to understand.
Oh, sure.
Uh, you were talking about trade-offs, and then everything has a trade-off. But I was just following what's written up here, but speed of cost recovery versus volatility in customer bills. Uh, and it says monthly factors recover cost quickly, but could lead to bill volatility. And then seasonal factors, and then middle ground, and then the last one, single annual factor, current policy, which is what we're doing now. Is slow to recover the cost, but it leads to bill stability. Is that right? Am I reading, understanding? I just read.
That is correct.
I just soak it up.
Sure, and it, and, and when I talk about stability, I'm talking about month-to-month stability.
That's what I mean, so people can expect this is about what it's gonna be. Is that what you mean?
That's right, but you do have the ebbs and flows of consumption patterns as well, right? So in your, with a fixed factor, um, the charge is there, it's there for the whole year. And so as, as customers use more in the winter and summer, their bills go up, and then the value would go down. But that factor, that cost per kilowatt hour is the same. With a monthly factor, that factor would change every month. But that can lead to bigger swings because the factor's going up and down and up and down to try to track power cost. So you're right, and then kinda that last bullet point really is the true trade-off. It's looking at the cash flow for the utility. How are we managing our cash? And, and we have to pay those power bills, and then how quickly can we recover it, right? The lead lag versus what does it mean for the customers?
Yeah, I was trying to think, I'm sure everybody is, what's good for the town and also, uh, our customers who are our citizens. You know, how, what can they expect as well? Thank you.
Sure. And I, and I think, you know, I ki, I kinda put that middle ground, that something like a seasonal factor might be appropriate here. Um, because our power costs are not months-to-month volatile necessarily. It is more seasonal because it's driven by that AEP transmission cost, that, that's more of a seasonal cost itself. So maybe going to something that's kinda that middle ground would make some sense to think about.
Okay.
I have a question for you. Do you have any other members that, uh, Richlands, we went through a boundary adjustment, and I think it was two thousand and five. And about a fourth of our population is under AEP that doesn't receive Richland's utility. Or what, Richland's electric. How do you offset that difference with, I mean, AEP doesn't do a PCA as far as I know?
AEP, uh, honestly, it's been a little while since I've looked at all their tariffs. So with, with the investor-owned utilities, they, they often have a lot of different rate riders. They, they usually do have some kind of an adjustment factor. They're not adjusting them monthly. They're, they're adjusting them, I don't know exactly what AEP's doing. I'd have to look it up and get back to you, but, um.
I guess my question is, how do we explain to the, the portion of the town that has Richland's electric?
That comparison, that's right. Al, Alice just informed me that the AEPs is an annual, they call it a fuel factor. Cause it's really based on their cost of fuel as a, as a generator, whereas ours is power cost, cause we purchase. But, um, so theirs is an annual factor, and that is something to take into account.
When you use the word tariff, you were talking about, um.
Yes.
AEP, uh, is that a word you would use to describe what, uh, things that we need to?
Um, I use the, well, I use the, the phrase tariff to just represent the, the schedule of rates that they charge. And then also the provisions of those rates, so, um, for the, for the town, it'd be the ordinance.
Okay, I just got to clear that up in my head. Thank you.
I doubt, I don't know if you'd have these figures or not. When you do your studies. What's the average that like Batata, uh, Danville and some, some of the other communities charge? For managing that system? In other words, what do they take off the top? What's the average, ten percent, five percent?
Um, it, unfortunately, it varies quite a bit, and there's a lot of different ways. When you say, you know, take off the top, there's, there's usually, um, the, the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes is a way to, to, you know. Create a level of what I would call cash for a utility, because a utility should hold some cash for emergency purposes. Um, so there's, there's payment in lieu of taxes, there are, for electric cooperatives, there, there are just actually margins, retained margins. Um, patronage capital is what they call it, but the, but those rates vary quite a bit because everybody's situation is very different.
Well, all towns. If they have an electric system, I use it as a crutch, meaning that they sort of dip into the fund to. Fund other things. That's what I'm talking about. They charge a lot more than what the system. Takes to run, and I was wondering what the other communities that use it as sort of a crutch. Yeah, I guess a ten percent, five percent, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you, uh, there, there can be transfers to general fund, is a, is a way to, I think that's what you're trying to describe.
Richland's transfers maybe nine hundred thousand dollars into the general fund counting taxes on, which is considerable. I'm wondering what percentage does the other communities?
What is a typical?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have that on, in. Um, I don't have that on, in hand. I think one source that I could look at is the American Public Power Association. I think they public, published some statistics.
Oh, you could go on.
That, that is based on size of utilities, number of customers, those types of things. I'd be happy to follow up with, with John on that as, as best as I can. I think there's some statistics out there.
Anyway, you could follow up with me. Give me the figures too.
Sure.
I think, just back on the power cost adjustment, it's not adding any margin. Clear on the power cost of the case, it doesn't add any amount of cash. It's cost recovery driven.
Yeah, and that, that's a good point, Garrett. And just to get it into the microphone, um, yeah, Garrett was saying that, that the. The design of the PCA is not to generate additional cash. It's, it's intended to make sure we do recover power costs. And again, it's also not additive. So whereas right now with, with a no power cost, we're, we're seeing a schedule of up to fifteen point three cents. What I'm saying is, once we, if we were to design some kind of a, a power cost adjustment factor. Um, we, we might be able to do something more like twelve or thirteen cents here with the expectation that the power cost adjustment would be two to three of those cents. Uh, and, and those are just figures to demonstrate that it's, it's not an additional charge on top of the fifteen. The actual number would depend on how we design it.
So is it fair to say that the PCA on the town bill is the same or comparable to the fuel factor on the AEP bill before I ask that question?
I'd have to follow up on that one for you too.
I think. We charge a lot more per kilowatt than AEP. The average, I think we charge AEP is about a little over ten. We're thirteen and a half. So we're considerably higher than AEP per watt, kilowatt. That's not counting the PCA. That's base. Would you want to move on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so those are, those are really kind of the thoughts around the PCA and, and. I think what we'd be looking for is if there's interest in taking another look at this, GDS would be happy to do that. Okay, on, on net metering, um, again, this is just intended to be kind of an introductory handful of slides for the council to help. Start thinking about this. It, it's certainly a major issue in the industry for a lot of uh, util, all utilities, municipals, public power and investor owned utilities. And, and primarily it's a question of as the cost of solar for, for our homeowners and commercial customers comes down. And you've got solar developers and sales folks out, out there and they're, they're wanting to put solar out on rooftops. You know, what does that mean for the utility and what is our policy going to be about that? And um, one of the things it does in a, in this slide, I'll, I'll take a minute to kind of walk through. Is for utilities that are getting a lot of, a large concentration of solar, what it does is it, under a traditional rate design. It, it forces the utility, or doesn't force, it results in an under collection of our fixed cost under a traditional rate. Uh, approach. And by a traditional rate, I mean a, a two part rate, which is what we have right now. If we just focus again on, on kind of the residential where we have that nine dollar ninety cent charge and the ten cent energy charge. The nine dollars and ninety cents is really not enough to recover the fixed cost investment we have in our distribution system. And so um, if we are giving a, a discount for net metering, if they're able to avoid kilowatt hour sales. Uh, what we recover from a net metering customer is, is much less towards fixed cost than what we really should be collecting. And that's kind of what these two charts show. I don't know if the mouse will come up on the screen or not. There it is. So, so I have two scenarios here where we, we look at just, and, and these are not. Richland's specific numbers. These are actually drawn from a, uh, an example that GDS had, had put together for a, for a guide on that metering that we wrote for, for someone else. Um, so these are illustrative examples, but they, they paint the picture. And if we look at the cost to serve two different customers and in scenario A, we have a customer that uses seven hundred and fifty kilowatt hours in a month. And they do not have solar. And then we look at a customer that would need the same seven hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, but they have a solar panel. And that solar panel produces four hundred kilowatt hours. So what they purchased from the utility is only three hundred and fifty kilowatt hours. Okay? The cost to serve that customer in fixed cost is fifty one dollars a month. But our rate is seven dollars and fifty cents a month. And then we have a ten point nine cent per kilowatt hour rate. When we, when we look at the cost to serve, the fixed and variable cost is ninety dollars for this customer. Um, and you can see that our service charge, the orange bar here is only seven dollars and fifty cents. And so you can see comparing the fixed cost, the blue line to the orange. Um, we recover a lot of our fixed cost through that ten point nine cent energy charge. And so in this example, uh, our energy charge is eighty one dollars and seventy five cents. And so for this customer, we do recover all of our costs, but we recover a lot of it through that energy charge. When we go to the same rate structure for this solar customer now, um, what you can see. Is that we actually under recover our cost by about twenty three dollars and sixty cents. And it's because they only purchased three hundred and fifty kilowatt hours from us. Um, because they, they generated four hundred of their own kilowatt hours. So um, the, the challenge for utilities is when there's a lot of this going on now. Most utilities, you know, they want to be indifferent, at least if not encouraging of people putting out solar panels. And so if you're indifferent, then you need to set up your price signals appropriately so that this, this problem doesn't occur. And that's really what utilities are dealing with is, is they get more and more solar on the system and they're allowing this big discount through their energy charges. Uh, it affects their long-term fixed cost recovery. And that's being shifted on to all the other customers, right? Because the, the costs are going to be recovered. And so it's a, it's really a cost shifting issue. So um, when we think about what utilities have done with respect to this. Um, I'm actually going to take a little detour here and there, there's two things you have to think about. There's the energy transaction. So how are we actually going to measure this energy? And then there's the actual rate transaction. How are we going to deal with the, the dollars and cents associated with this? Uh, so on the energy transaction side, the, the traditional approach is just a single meter. Uh, that can flow forward and backward. Probably all heard about that, right? And so that is one approach. That's the most common approach. There's actually another approach where you can have two meters. You can actually sub meter the solar panel and then have the, the, the retail meter itself. And in that approach, you can actually know exactly how much power was generated from the rooftop solar. And you know, the net amount from your retail meter and you can figure out, here's how much the, the house actually used or needed. Here's how much they generated on their own. Here's how much they bought from the grid. The rate transaction side, um, there's really kind of four or five different approaches that the industry has used. The, the simplest approach is a qualifying facility approach. It's been around forever and it, really that is more for. Where solar is being interconnected to the grid. It's not necessarily there to offset local load. It's not there to meet the household's consumption. Um, and so it's just a straight purchase of the energy through your system. But really these bottom three are the ones that, that utilities have done. The traditional is, is the net metering approach. And again, with net metering, it's kind of a feed forward, feedback meter. Uh, whatever the net happens, you deal with it. What that means is that the customers uh, for their, they, they enjoy the benefit of reducing the retail cost. For their, their local generation. The real question becomes, what do you do when they actually produce more energy in a month than they require? And so there's actually a feedback onto the grid. And so for a lot of utilities, the historical approach had been to allow that to roll over. Meaning that they would get full retail credit for every kilowatt hour generated from that solar panel. Um, what we're seeing though is a change in that approach. Where a lot of utilities now are saying, okay, well, when you have an excess, instead of crediting and, you know, creating a bank of kilowatt hours that credit against another month's kilowatt hours. We're going to actually buy it back from you at some, some rate. And then the question becomes, what is that rate? And, and so for a lot of utilities, they're moving towards more of an avoided cost, which would be more like, okay. If I have to serve that kilowatt hour through my power supply contracts, generation that I own, it would cost me this much to serve it. So that's why I'm going to buy it at some kind of an avoided cost. So that's really where the industry is moving is still allowing for full retail credit. Um, for everything that's used, but doesn't create an excess and then buying back the excess at some rate. And net bill, net billing is kind of a, that kind of an approach. Uh, and then the third approach, and this is kind of the more radical approach is what's called buy all, sell all. And in that approach, you usually would have the two meter configuration. And the customer would buy every kilowatt hour that they demanded for their local consumption at retail. And then the utility would buy every kilowatt hour of generation at a wholesale rate. And so it's the least customer friendly or solar friendly approach. I'll, I'll pause there because that's, that's their, unfortunately it's kind of complicated. That's a lot of material on one slide. What, what we're seeing with, with other, with other utilities here in Virginia, other, other municipal municipalities is a move from the full net metering with a rollover. To a net metering with a buyback rate. So that, that's kind of where locally things are going and, and industry wide, that's where a lot of folks are going, just to give you an idea. So if we were to start thinking about establishing a policy and having it in advance. Uh, of folks starting to ask, okay, I want to put a, a solar out on my roof. What does the utility do to support that? You've got to have that policy in place. And so there's, there's all the interconnection requirements, the safety and engineering side, but then there's also this rate side that we need to think about. And so. That whole slide really more on a basic graph with a box around half of the phrase, which is awesome. You know, really, again, there's this trade off between what's, what's best for the utility versus what's best for the, the customer. The customer here being the, the customer that owns the, the PV system. And what we have to keep in mind is um. Ultimately, especially our distribution costs have to be recovered. So if we're providing an excess benefit to the, the PV customers, our non PV customers are having to pick up that call. So it's a cost shift between types of customers on the system. But you can see that the, the very traditional net metering with a rollover was the most PV and customer friendly. And then the buy all, sell all is the one that's the least. And that middle ground is where we're seeing a lot of utilities heading in the last couple of years. So that's just intended to be a quick few slide overview of, of what we're seeing with respect to net metering and, and rate design. Be glad to take any questions on that stuff.
Counsel?
Why would they buy back the excess generation? What, what would they ever use it for? Are they using it or are they just giving them?
Well, it's so, so it's going to go, it's going to feed onto the grid and it's going to offset load somewhere. The electrons are going to flow. And so we're, we're metering that. And then the question is, what do we do with that, that excess?
So you're essentially paying the customer back, I guess.
So, right. And so the traditional approach has been to pay the customer full retail for that as well. Um, what the industry is moving to is paying something that's more like a wholesale price for that.
Have they had resistance to that?
You get, you get some resistance, um, not as much as if you went all the way to like buy all, sell all. Because that's, that's very punitive to the solar. The, the challenge is, is if you've got a lot of it on your system and now you're trying to change course, you've got folks that have made long-term investments in, in panels. Under one approach and you're going to change the approach on them and that's going to create some, you know, some issues. As you said, there's going to be some disgruntled folks.
And that's what we're trying to avoid because we don't really have the demand yet. So we were trying to, you know, before thinking, go ahead and get something in place. So then we, the demand is eventually coming, you know, it's a matter of time. So when it's here, we already have something in place and then it's not us trying to, you know, figure out how we're going to do it for, you know, one person.
A reactionary movement.
Yeah.
That's right.
Kind of do what we feel is best for everybody long term and then go ahead and put it in place. So then. The policy's set and we don't have to worry about it, you know, for every individual person that wants to try to do something.
Right. So I, I, I think John, the intent was not necessarily to, to try to get counsel to move on anything on this tonight, but just to set the stage that this is something we're proactively thinking about.
Thank you.
You bet. Uh, we wanted to end the night befuddled. This is actually the last slide.
Don't worry. We usually do that. We usually do that anyway.
If, if we wear you down, there's a lot less questions, so.
I just want to say thank you. You've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Befuddling. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for any of these people, uh, while they're here?
I would ask, you know, as I've said, you know, we kind of have the four items that, um, I'd like to get some duration from counsel on. You know, of these four items, what one or two do they feel is the most beneficial? And if we only had to go, you move forward and look at one, which one would they recommend?
Probably the batteries.
Counsel's thoughts.
I would think so. I wouldn't want to speak.
I think the behind the meter battery storage is probably would be my vote.
It would be my vote too. I also liked that recommendation.
So, um, you guys have heard me go this way before, but I'm going to say it again. The, the power cost adjustment is a very important factor going forward. Um, that I think you all need to consider. With the volatility for your size, that power costs are for transmission and capacity components in particular. It is very difficult to manage that from base rate calculations only coming back once a year. For uh, your discussion on rate recovery. And um, ultimately it drives a need to push more for increases into those rates. And so we're just throwing that out there because for your size, you're not AEP size. And, and we have to remember that. And so I'll, I'll throw that out on the power cost adjustment. Um, I think the battery storage is a no brainer. Uh, honestly, given all the other members that are involved in running after it. It's almost, you know, a pretty, it's a low cost look at, at your opportunity on that. So I think solar is probably the last one to, to be spending a lot of time with. So if proposals are coming in on a retail building or something like that, I think that's probably your lowest priority. And I think the dies, diesels worth some effort. You got a unit sitting out there. Uh, there's, there's something we can, we can consider doing with that and even do it in parallel with the battery to give you a look at both. So uh, put the solar last and I'd put the, the, honestly, I'd put the power cost adjustment right up there with the battery. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the suggestions and your expert input. Counsel's pleasure to be put on the agenda for consideration. Uh, two things, three things. Uh, I'll try to review that as best I can and trust me, I, I will take all the help I can get. The recommendation from GDS, I'll include all of you, okay, is um, that we consider behind the meter battery storage. And that we consider uh, behind the meter diesel, is that right? Diesel. And then also uh, power cost adjustment. Solar would be last. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So um, would you like two things, three things? Counsel's pleasure.
Let me save a little bit of mine to turn that heat pump up. I'm freezing.
I am. Uh, I would, uh, we cannot vote. I would make a recommendation that we do turn the air conditioning to a lower temp, turn the, to a, a higher temperature. It's very cold.
I would raise my hand, but it's frozen.
Uh, I agree. Uh, Officer Brown, Councilman Brown.
I'd say put those three on there.
Okay. Counsel's pleasure. Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, Doug?
Yes.
Mike, all, all three of those, Richard? So John, direction from counsel is to include those three.
I guess my question would be, you, what information or how do we want to have that conversation? I'm not a PCA expert. I don't know anything about diesel. I mean, the battery one is kind of straightforward. It's just making a decision to move forward with that, being part of that RFP. So that's, you know, more simple conversation, but um, if we're talking about PCAs and what it's going to impact, how it's going to impact. And that would be something the GDS would need to run some figures and.
I was going to say, the input, I agree with you. I certainly am no authority on any of that. So, and I don't know that any of us really are, but. Thank you for your input, John. Whatever the, these. Whatever the, these, uh, these people can provide us would be most helpful. And, uh, I don't know if it's possible. I don't know exactly how we pay you. But, uh, is it possible that on council night, if we need you, we could communicate with you via Zoom or something like that to get any extra input? I, I don't know if it's appropriate. So I'll just ask.
What's the date for the next council meeting?
It's the second Tuesday, um, of council.
It's the 12th.
The 12th, the 12th of, uh, the month. Let, let me make sure I'm telling you right. Richard says, uh, the 12th, yes, yes, the 12th of October. We begin at six o'clock.
While you're con- while you're considering that, wouldn't you have to go ahead with the battery first? Before you know the savings from the diesel or anything, you'd have to put one in priority and then consider the second one, I, the batteries, to get your savings.
I, I know what you're saying, but I don't think the two are conditioned on each other. Um, you know, that we bring that curve down when we participate in mitigation that, that reduces the cost. But the, the idea of the PCA continues, even if in a lower cost. You know, even with a storage project, let's say that brings the cost down, the idea of the need for the PCA still exists in that. So I would say more of a, a parallel.
Oh, I didn't mean that.
Is that what you mean?
No, that's not what I meant. You would have to see what kind of savings you're getting from the batteries before you could bring a company in and do a study how much is left that you can save using letting them, you know, do the diesel power. You'd have to get one first, which is a battery, then how much you're going to have left to pursue for the diesel. You'd have to know the battery first. Is that?
Yeah. Whatever council's pleasure is, I mean, you can run those in parallel. You can run the battery first and see what you think about it. Um, either, either or is fine. I was commenting on the PCA. And I think by the 12th, we could be ready with some indication of what are different approaches to the PCA by season? Or, you know, versus by month and, and contrast that, you know? Stability is always important in those and we do a, a pretty good job of helping to maintain stability even with the PCA. So I think that would be the, 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 the opportunity is to talk further about at that meeting, uh, by Zoom maybe. You know, what those different approaches might be. So you could have a sense of how those.
What are some of the communities that have the PCA right now? Do they do it monthly?
Um, you know, for example, um, I think Martinsville has a, a pretty regularly. You guys, you guys know better than me.
I'm not familiar with Martinsville. Um, Bedford has one that's like a six month average.
Stability.
Yeah. It adjusts more regularly. Yeah. I think it might adjust more regularly than six months.
Doctors, they help answer, you ask a good question. Do, does it help answer somewhat?
Yes.
I don't know exactly how to advise you, John, but I really, I don't know. You want to?
My only question would be, you know, I think that the battery is worth it on the agenda for next month because it's kind of time sensitive. Would you want to continue this type of format for the discussion on the PCA and the diesel?
My impression.
Or would you want to have it as part of a council meeting?
I think, well, my impression was all three of those are worth looking into. The first one is the time sensitive one, which is the, uh, battery storage. And that is, uh, they're going to, uh, uh, we're going to need to decide something perhaps at the October meeting about that. If we're going to move forward and move into the RFP at no cost, no risk. And then, uh, any potential risk, which is what we're always looking for, you know, taking a conservative approach, I suppose you would say, would come November, December, whenever this would be, we would be committing to that if we do. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you'd be looking to commit to the cost of the RFP in your next review in October so that you could provide that notice to us by mid-November.
Okay. So.
But that's not a commitment to the unit itself.
I, I, I'm just trying to have a general understanding at best, uh, because that's all I can do. So is council, uh, in agreement that this is what we should consider in October? The, uh, behind the meter battery storage, so he could put it on the agenda?
Yes.
The other things, John, uh, that we talked about, um, solar is last. Uh, I don't think we should consider it, in my opinion, right now. But what is the, uh, I will ask Jeff, how do you feel about solar and discussing it at this point?
Well, I think he said, you know, like I said, the battery was probably the first and the PCA is probably right up there with it. That's what I, I think the two we need to discuss fairly quickly, it sounds to me like. I mean, thank you.
Okay, that works. Are you good with those two?
Yeah.
How about you, Mike?
Richard?
Sure.
Okay. Well, let's say those two are probably the most pressing that we need to discuss. Okay? Would that help a lot, John?
I'll get those two on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, again, I, I don't really know. We don't want to incur costs of the town, but we need you. So what I'm asking is, uh, does council want these people to be available if they can via Zoom at our next meeting? In case we need your advice, you know, we're, we need you. Does that sound reasonable, council? We'll have you on a retainer. Thank you. Uh, anything else regarding electricity, John?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I'd like to tear a 10 minute recess. Thank you.
Council back in session. Okay. Uh, the next, uh, on the agenda under item four is B, item B, uh, which is charter changes. So does everyone have from our meeting previously, the proposed changes so we can discuss them? I know we went into, ran into some wording issues right off the bat, so we're trying to clarify those things. Okay. So, uh, without further ado, I will ask, um, members to, if they have their proposed changes in front of them. I think we had, um, the car broke down in the road on the first one. Uh, and so we are on page, whatever. It's, uh, article three under the council, three point one, the governing body of the town should consist of a mayor and six council persons. Okay, municipal elections. We had talked about, uh, municipal elections within the town, this is three point two, uh, shall take place on the first cheesy. And we were discussing, uh, about the terms of members of council. So, uh, I think Mike, I'll turn this one over to you because I think is that, I believe that was your proposed change, right?
Yes.
Do you have thoughts on the wording?
Yeah, we, we can remove, I think, uh, based on our last council meeting, we all agreed to, um, keep it to two consecutive elected terms in office. And that'd be it.
Okay. So, uh, okay. So can we just delete that, John, and see what it, how it reads? So the proposed change there is, um, a few seconds ago, there's a strike through. Each member of council should be limited to two consecutive elected terms in office.
The second part says, Tom Searle as an appointed member of council shall not count towards the term with described or above, described above. And we had suggested that we also add, um, special election. Tom Searle as an appointed member of council or specially elected, I'm not sure how we said we were gonna.
Said Tom Searle as a, um, member of council via a special election shall not count towards a term limit described above.
Do you wanna, are you able to insert that, John, so we can see it? We have to vote on this later, not tonight, but so we can all see what the proposals are.
Mary Ann did let me know she's on her way.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
That doesn't make sense, no.
Uh, or.
Be appointed if you were, or, or.
Yeah, or is the operative word.
Were elected in a special election.
Okay, that's the proposed change, right? Okay.
Jeff, rolling up your points. What was your point, Jeff, on that?
Well, we were talking about the different scenarios, whether or not we should have an appendix as to the different case scenarios. You know, any time you have something like this, it's gonna be open up for interpretation regardless.
I think you were talking about if the mayor serves as a member of council and then.
Yeah, we were, we were going over all the situations like what's happening here. Will it ever happen again? Probably not, but you never know. And whether or not you wanna include that is the other thing, you know, I mean, you know, you can say it and then basically we'll.
So, so I feel, this is my being a little workshop, I feel as if you, I don't remember what we're talking about now. If you are elected before your term and you can't fulfill the rest of your duties. We were talking about if they were eligible for another two years if they, if they.
Right. Sort of the case that we had here where Rod didn't fulfill his entire.
In, in, in my personal opinion, I think that the rest of that term should be forfeited.
It's fine.
Right, uh, that's just my opinion because I think it needs to be cleared. That's the only reason I think it should be clear. And I think that's the most simple and clear way to do it. If you're elected to that four year term and you can't fulfill that term.
So you don't wanna differentiate between somebody that was elected, served for a couple of years and then resigned versus somebody that like the mayor who was elected and was essentially forced as my mayor into the mayor.
I think, um, I honestly think that Jeff has a point. He had mentioned this to me, uh, well, it's never gonna be perfect. The constitution of the United States is constantly under interpretation. So I think clear and simple, simple is the best thing to do here. And the more complex we try to get, the more we'll not succeed.
Right. Well, I equate it to, uh, I'm a high school official and they basically make a case book in addition to the rules book. Because you can't determine the rules just from the rulebook. Does that make sense? Like you have situations that are created.
There's the unpredictable and the unknown.
Sure, and so they go over situations to where what might happen and how do you apply that rule? But that's over, you know, fifty or seventy-five years of, of doing it.
Right, and, and to speak about, for instance, Rod, your situation. If we put in here that if you are elected to a four year term and you choose to not fulfill that term, that you lose the remaining years, that's simplicity. And that probably, maybe, or maybe not, would have affected Rod's decision. But he would have had that opportunity and knew that that was gonna be the case, right? He would have known that going in.
I had to think about that, Mike.
So if this was part of this, you knew you were gonna lose your term.
As a member of council and I can't get it back because the charter says, if I forfeit my two years for whatever reason, I just quit, or I have moved into this position because I was the vice mayor, I forfeit my two years?
Yes, you would know.
Uh, well, I'm trying to get that. What am I forfeiting?
You would have, just as if you, you have your seat, you've been in your seat to be elected, you also forfeit the following two years of what would be.
Four year term.
And I think you probably need to actually say that it's two consecutive, four year terms in office.
Does that make sense?
I have to think about it, I mean, I'm tired, I'll be honest with you. I'm not confounding anything, I just don't know.
Why don't you leave it simple? If you're elected for two.
Four year terms.
Two four year terms and leave it at that. I mean, and you don't have to explain.
It, I'll tell you what I think.
You won't be here if you quit.
That's right. Just let somebody else.
Tom Searle as an appointed member of council, what we're really addressing is what just happened.
We are.
And, uh, are we addressing what just happened and trying to make, quote, a rule based on what just happened, which was unusual? Are we addressing, is it the bigger picture? We nitpicking, getting into details, I just ask.
But I think we took out the word consecutive, correct?
Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, we, you know, we took about, we took out the word consecutive to begin with.
Yeah.
Because you might not wanna be a. Doesn't have to be consecutive, yeah. I think we took that out the other night.
Okay. Each member of council should be limited to two.
Elected.
Uh, elected terms in office.
I think, I think it needs to state two four year terms.
Yeah, if you lose one, you'll wanna run again.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's simple.
I think we'll put that in there, two four year elected terms in office.
Only issue on the mayor thing is, it says the vice mayor shall become the mayor. You don't have an option.
I think we should leave that, um, I read it very carefully and the people, many people, members of this council, call me and citizens, are you gonna, what decision you're gonna make? Well, it implied to me, I had a decision to make, but it said shall, shall is a, an operative word. Uh, and there is not a choice, but I did think about it because it was presented to me or asked me by members of council and citizens, are you going to do it? Which left me thinking, huh, I have a choice, but I read very carefully and made my choice based on what I read.
I think that looks fantastic.
Uh, as far as the point two, it's okay. Enough said. I don't know that it's really important, but if you guys feel it is, I'd leave it, leave it, leave it.
You mean number two?
Point, uh, yeah.
Are we talking about?
It's, it's gonna.
Three point five?
It's a strike through, I think, I can't tell.
Oh, okay.
We're still a strike through.
It's fine, it's fine. It, this is just a discussion. Okay.
I, I think two is important.
It's fine.
Cause you never really know what's gonna happen, there's.
It's fine.
You could look back in the last twenty years and have to come to be appointed as a member of council, uh, it's probably. I have to look, I hate to guess, but I'd say.
I was appointed and to fulfill the, uh, the, uh, term of Henry Collins, who died in office. And, and, uh, and I was interviewed. There were three other people, two of the people who came wanting the position. And frankly, I thought they interviewed a lot better than I did. Then they went into executive session, I don't know what they said, they discussed it, came out and said, I got it. I don't know why, but they did. And they asked me in the interview, it was an open interview, if I was appointed, would I run or was I accepting this just because I could say I was a member of council? And I said, I'll run. It was most unusual. I'm telling you, uh, you know, hand of the Bible.
The rest is history.
Here I am. I would never have been involved in this, but here I am. Okay, all right, moving on to the next one, um, let's see, what's the next proposed change, three point five, is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I give an opinion on that?
Uh, let me just read it first, uh, here, Doug. The mayor shall preside over the meetings of the council and we're striking, I'm gonna read it as, as it is and then as the proposed changes, is that acceptable? All right, the mayor shall preside over the meetings of the council, um, but is not a member thereof, uh, I think something got messed up there, have the right, have the same right to speak there and as a member and of, can vote in case of a tie. I'm a little lost on how that's reading, John. What was the original content? It's, do you have the original one without the changes? I have this in front of me, uh, let's see here. Well, let me, that's okay, let me, I've got it right here, John, I'm sorry, I, I'm good. Uh, I just was looking at that. Here's with the way it reads originally, it's important to note, uh, three point five mayor. The mayor shall preside over the meetings of the council, but is not a member thereof, have the right to speak therein as members. Should be as a member, whatever, as, no, as members can speak, uh, and vote only in case of a tie, but shall have no veto. The mayor should recognize as the head of the, okay. Now, the proposed change is, hi, Mary Ann, welcome. Well, they explained you were at a game, I think, for your grandson. Good, I'm glad you're here. All right, uh, the mayor, this is proposal, I hope I'm reading it correctly. Um, the mayor shall preside over the meetings of the council and have the same right to speak therein as a member. It could be either way. And vote only in case of a tie or in any matter before council, including ordinances and resolutions, which I think that is important, uh, but shall have no veto. Uh, let's go on down here, let me just read it. The mayor should recognize as the head of the town government for all ceremonial purposes, the purpose of military law, or martial law, whatever, and the service of civil process. At the regular meeting of the council held on the, uh, in the month of January, following a municipal election, the council shall choose by a majority vote of all the members thereof, one of their number to be vice mayor for the ensuing two years. The vice mayor shall, in the absence or disability of the mayor, perform the duties of mayor, this is the addition. But shall not lose their, uh, duties as a member of council, including but not limited to voting. Uh, if a vacancy shall occur in the office of mayor, the vice mayor shall become mayor for the unexpired portion of the term. In the absence of disability of both the mayor and the vice mayor, bless you, the council shall, by majority vote of those presence, choose one of their number to perform the duties of mayor. And the selected member shall not, and this is an addition, and the selected member shall not lose their duties as a member of council, including but not limited to voting. Is that it?
Correct. If it's okay, I would, let's focus on this first part and then we'll, cause it's kind of not related to the second part.
Okay. Well, the, I think that's a good suggestion. Doug, you had a comment?
I don't, I mean, to me, the mayor is not part of the council, it's sort of like checks and balances. There's three, there's three parts of the government, the mayor, um, council and town hall. And I don't even understand why you would even put, what does it change? I mean, I think it's lowering the position of mayor if you put him a, as part of council. It was, the mayor should be separate, that's, that's part of the checks and balances. I mean, that's my thing.
Okay.
So I, I think this is straightforward. The mayor already votes in case of a tie. All we're doing is expanding to allow that to be ordinances and resolutions.
That's the first part.
First part, yeah, it's all a problem.
Yeah, the first part.
We're just being more clear on the duties of the mayor.
I think, um, personally, I agree that, because there has been a question before, can the mayor vote on ordinances and resolutions? It does need to be clear on that, in my opinion, just an opinion.
And, and a mayor did vote on, on, I think the last time it, it happened, uh, based, you know, a couple of years.
I mean, I thought that was a given, if it's a tie, you vote.
It really, that was questionable, Doug. Uh, so in, if the mayor could vote on a resolution, uh, and an ordinance which had power, uh, that was questioned. So not in court, anything like that, but just questioned and it raised a lot of, raised a lot of eyebrows. I personally think that's important to be clear what the mayor can vote on.
Sure, I just thought that was a given.
It, yeah, I get it.
But I, I think this makes it more clear, this isn't, this one right here is not changing anything, it's just elaborating on the duties of what the mayor. And I think this one looks.
Any more thoughts on that part? Okay, let's go to the next part about the duties of the mayor, okay? The vice mayor shall, in the absence or disability of the mayor, perform the duties of mayor, this is the addition. But shall not lose their duties as a member of council, including but not limited to voting. That's the change that I think you were questioning, is that correct, Doug?
Yeah, correct. I mean, that's part of the checks and balances, you can't wear two hats. It's like, um, if you're in a court of law, uh, the judge is one part and the jury is the second part. That would be like letting the judge have a vote on who's guilty or who's not with the jury, you know? I mean, if we change this, that's changing our checks and balances. And if he assumes the duties of a mayor, he shouldn't, or he shouldn't, pardon me.
Doesn't matter.
Have, have a vote, and then if he becomes mayor, does he keep his vote? Uh, or she? I mean, it complicates a lot of things. And all these, I think, this has been here for a hundred and some years. I think we better think about a lot of changes, especially this one. And it's gonna take probably two years to get it through the legislature anyway, that's the average. And most of us won't even be on council at that time, you know, will be gone.
I guess the issue falls back to the fact that it takes four members of council to pass an ordinance or a resolution, right? I mean, is that basically what? If, if we had a, if the mayor had to.
If it's a tie.
If it's a tie.
Yeah, right, they should only vote in a tie, right.
But at the point that the vice mayor fills the role of the mayor, there wouldn't be a tie because it should be a three to two vote, but it takes four members of council to pass the ordinance and resolution, so I think that may be a problem.
You would be appointing another member, uh, so that would take up the slack.
I realize that, but I'm, what I'm saying is.
Not, not, not necessarily, he, he just talked about if the vice mayor's running the meeting.
Yeah.
Like if he, if the vice mayor's just running the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have anybody else to appoint. The mayor's just absent, that'd be sort of like.
Well, it'd be a, but you wouldn't consider ordinance or reva, uh, resolution in one setting. It would take more time, I'd be pretty quick. And I think if, uh, the mayor was going one meeting, it's not gonna make or break an ordinance. I mean, if you're that in a hurry to change things with an ordinance or a resolution, you got a problem.
I think that's what happened.
This actually, to be as precise as I can, um, I was going to Charlottesville, uh, for my knee surgery and we had a meeting of council and Mary Ann stepped up as the vice mayor. And in my absence, but I really wasn't absent, I was available by Zoom, but council voted not to allow Zooming. Or I could have stepped in as my, in my role as mayor, but I recall, they said, if you're absent, you're absent. And I was not, uh, I was privy to all that because I could hear it, but that's how the council voted. And that, that brought to the table, the question that you're talking about, and Mary Ann voted. The attorney, uh, was sitting there, I don't recall who, cause I was at the Charlottesville, and, um, said, uh, it was allowable and you objected to it then, and here we are now. I hope I, did I recount that precisely? It was said, if you're not here, you're not here, and I won't forget it. And that led to this discussion.
Let me add, add another point to that too. If you change this, the case that you got in court, it undermines it. If you already have this right, you've already proclaimed it in court. So that's gonna undermine your court cases, that's being.
This is just making it more clear.
Well, I mean, if, if you have that right already and you proclaim it in court, it's, it's gonna undermine your court case.
What I'm telling you is, it's just making it more clear.
Well, it's.
The charter already states that that can happen. We're just making it more clear to avoid.
I don't.
People wasting money trying to, you know, fight us in court or something.
I don't, I mean.
Money that wasted on it, but it already shows this. So what we're trying to, to do is, is provide clarity.
I mean, I don't think you had that right in the first place, but. I don't think you had the right in the first place, but I think it's, I can't phantom someone running a meeting and can, and persuade it either way and then voting on it. They could run that meeting one way and then vote the same way. And that's part of our checks and balances, that's why we have these three different parts.
Well, anybody can persuade anything during a meeting.
Well, not, not if you're, you have a, you have an advantage if you're setting, running the meeting.
Why are you letting?
Why would you, why would you have an advantage running the meeting?
You allow someone to.
Rod's never had an advantage running the meeting. I mean, Rod can tell us his, the mayor can tell us what he feels.
I can speak as a member of council, but I'm not, I can speak the same as if I were a member, but I'm not a member. It's what it said. I can't remember what it says now, we've talked about it so much, but that's, I can speak as though I were a member, I think's what it said.
And like I said, if a member of council's running the meeting.
You should be balanced if you're running a meeting, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be balanced if you're gonna be able to vote.
Well, what you're saying, Doug, is if I were the mayor and I was sitting in that chair, do you think that me giving my opinion on something would sway your decision on how you?
I think you could run that meeting a certain way. And I think every who is over a meeting, they can't wear two hats. And that's what you're trying to do, and to me, it's common sense and ludicrous that you would even propose that. Because I, I don't understand how you.
Somebody's gotta run the meeting.
All this is, is a power grab, you know, yes it is.
It's just somebody run the meeting, is what it is. I don't think, yeah, because all, all the vice mayor gets to do is run the meeting. So, so who would ever be, that's why you didn't wanna be vice mayor, or so you thought, right? You'd lose your power to vote, that's why you didn't accept the vice mayor, right? Right, but that's the way you interpret it, which wasn't the way our legal team interpreted. We, we had to have somebody to run the meeting, so whoever runs the meeting is running the meeting. Whether it's Connie, Frank, whoever, anybody out there could run it, for that matter.
I can only address one small feature here, it isn't, I'm not.
Run the meeting somehow, somebody's gotta run the meeting.
I'm not taking a side here at all, but talked about the persuasion of the, um, mayor's position. Uh, the power of the bully pulpit does not apply to the mayor of rich lands.
I think it would. I've never thought of that.
But that doesn't mean, uh, I'm not saying that the mayor, the vice mayor cannot vote. I'm talking, it was mentioned power of persuasion. I express my opinion a lot since I'm up here, but it mean, I'm not trying to persuade any of you, but that being said, is a different, it's totally different than whether the vice mayor can vote, that has nothing to do with it. It's not the power persuasion, it's whether the vice mayor can legally vote is what we're talking about.
Okay, she sticks.
I'm not taking a side, I'm just clarifying, we need to take this persuasion part out, it is not what we're talking about.
I, I think what the biggest concern is in this, is there needs to be a more clear understanding as to what the vice mayor can and cannot do and how many votes. What I, what I have a problem with is the vagueness in, in it not showing, well, if, if the vice mayor is. if the vice mayor is chairing the meeting, I don't want the, the vice mayor to have the ability to vote both as what they are as a council member as well as the mayor, I think that's where the focus should be, they shouldn't get two votes. That's my, that's, that's where my.
That's what I'm saying, somebody just gets to chair the meeting, so if the mayor's gone, then the power to break the tie, it just fails, the motion fails. If it's three, three, the motion doesn't pass. That's, that, that's, I mean, like the other night, if it was three, three, the mayor does, the vice mayor doesn't, the, the motion fails.
I wanna mention one more thing, Richard also, uh, had a very good point. It had to do with an ordinance and that's where it took four people. That is critical to the discussion. But I have a suggestion as the mayor. Since we cannot vote here and we have a difference of opinion, which is part of a democracy, I suggest that we move on. Okay, next proposed change, uh, where are we, John, three point eight? Is that right?
Great.
Hold on. I like to have my little copy here. Okay, okay, um, it's under, uh, let me read here, B. Okay, on the copy that I have, it doesn't highlight it here, but it's okay, B, uh, let me read it as it's, is and let's see where we're trying to go with this and is it a positive change or is it just not positive? And what is the purpose of all this? Uh, B, okay. The enacting clause of all ordinances passed by the council shall be, be it ordained by the council of the town of Richlands. No ordinance, unless it be an emergency measure, shall be passed until it has been read at two regular meetings, not less than seven days apart, unless the requirement of such reading has been dispensed with by the affirmative vote of four of the members of council. No ordinance or section thereof shall be revised or amended by its title or section number only, but the new ordinance shall contain the entire ordinance or section as revised or amended. The As and the Nays, Is and the As, whatever, shall be taken upon the passage of all ordinances or resolutions and entered upon the journal of the proceedings of the council and every ordinance or resolution shall require on final passage, the affirmative vote of at least four of the members of council. That's what we're looking at right here. Okay? So the proposed change is to take out some of this language, no ordinance, unless it be an emergency measure, uh, shall be passed until, and I think that is questionable, and I think Ms. Culler had a point, what is an emergency measure? We haven't really defined it, I don't know, uh, shall be passed, and this is where we're gonna go here, shall be passed until it's been read at any, or at any two meetings, remove the word regular, regular, special or emergency, um, and there's a strikeout. Let me, let me read it without the strikeouts, uh, no ordinance shall be passed and it has been read at any two meetings, regular, special or emergency, unless the requirement of a second reading has been dispensed with by the affirmative vote of four of the members of council. The, the change, the operative change here, as I'm interpreting it, is to dispense with, um, emergency measure and to dispense with regular and open it up to regular, special and emergency and take out the seven days apart and, uh, uh, requirement of such of a reading, I think's whatever. So can you see, uh, the word such is not important to me, but that's what the proposed change is, I don't know who suggested that, but it becomes, I guess, irrelevant. So that's a proposed change, thoughts?
I mean, all that's doing is, if you pass an ordinance, you need time to think and have community participation in what they think and I think they put this in here to slow the process down, to make sure that's what the community wanted and we're trying to change it and shorten the period, which I don't think we should and it's gonna short circuit the community if they have a say in it.
Okay.
The time.
Any other thoughts on this, members of council?
The first reading of the majority of the ordinances, I can't think of any that hasn't been, has been after the first public hearing that we've had on. So there is a, a, a voice that the public has, I, I'm not keen on the fact that we took out the less than seven days apart, cause I do think there needs to be a time in there, cause we don't wanna come today and then come back tomorrow.
I think you're correct, personal opinion.
So I, I don't know if it needs to be a, a thirty day time period or, or cause, do we, do we ever have anything that requires two public hearings or is it one public hearing?
I think one, but if we make a change and I would defer to John on this as our manager, if we have a change, I, I think we should have, this is an opinion, certainly no legal thing here, a no legal, uh, perspective. I think if you change something and we're dealing in public business and you have a change in an ordinance, you should have a second, an opportunity for another public hearing. It isn't the second public hearing, it's the first public hearing on the new ordinance, does that make sense? Uh, I hope that's clear, my thinking anyway. I think that it's important, um, I, I think it's well, and it's coming from a good place. I also think this time period, these are important so that public perception, which is important, isn't that we're trying to speed things through unnecessarily?
I, I just don't want down the road for it to be, uh, that we have a public hearing with the first reading and then we, a, a new council comes in and calls a special meeting on the same, uh, thing, you know, a day or two apart and that takes the public out of.
How do you feel about these words, Richard, um, uh, taking out the word regular and opening it up to regular, special or emergency? Do you feel like that's a little, um, uh, precarious?
Yeah, I don't, I think it opens up some liability.
Circumspect.
Yeah, especially with the special call meeting, because there would be nothing that would say that we couldn't have a public hearing today, have the first reading and call a special meeting and pass the ordinance, you know, within a forty-eight hour time period.
Twenty-four. I just think we need to be cautious about that, um, for Richlands, not just Rod Curry, not just for Mary Ann, Mike, Richard or, or Jeff or if Luggan were here or Doug or John, I really think that it's important that we be really cautious for you to any change on this one. I think this one does need thought, personal opinion, ladies and gentlemen. Any thoughts other than mine, I've expressed it?
I agree with you, Rob.
I agree too.
Uh, if anyone feels differently, feel free to speak, I said this in the prayer. When we go to bed at night, we're all under the God's blanket, we're all sleeping in bed together figuratively, please know that. We can disagree and still move right on and have a good meeting. I meant that, thank you, that's my interpretation.
So we instructed John to strike this whole change?
I will ask council's opinion, consensus, individually, uh, may I poll council, your thoughts, Jeff, strike it or leave it?
Strike the change.
This particular one?
Yes. I'll strike the change, just leave it as it is.
Uh, okay, so, uh, Doug, your thoughts?
Strike it.
Mary Ann, do you have thoughts on this? Are you warmed up? Strike it, I just want, want anything to behold council that could put any shade on us, so to speak, Mike?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with striking, I, my, my goal in all these changes is to provide with us and everyone else, you know, after us with more clarity and I'm, I don't think currently anyone is spending this that provides that clarity.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate, and we're all coming from a good place, everybody has different thoughts, so there's certainly no malice, I would certainly not think, uh, your thoughts, Richard, strike it or leave it? Okay, let's move on to the next, there's your instructions, John, from council, uh, move on to the next one, I think we can do this, guys. Um, let's see here, thank you, John, um.
That has more to do with the emergency ordinance, so if you remove the previous part, then this one's voided.
I would just take it out, um, and leave it as is. Is that what council's saying? On three point eight. Okay, is that, okay. Okay, uh, okay, I hope that helps, um, three point nine, appointees, okay? Here's the way it reads, I'll not read all that, but down to where I think it will make sense, um, appointees, uh, at the, this is three point nine, at the first meeting in January, following, uh, each council election or as soon thereafter, as practicable, the council shall appoint a town manager who shall be the administrative and executive head of the municipal government. The town manager shall be chosen by the council without regard to political beliefs, we really need to Bible that everywhere. My opinion, it tells you right here, there is not politics involved in this government, there should not be. All right, uh, okay, and solely upon the basis of his executive and administrative qualifications. At the time of his appointment, the town manager need not be a resident of the town or the Commonwealth, but during the tenure of office shall reside within the town. Okay, uh, at the time of appointment, okay? Now, the town manager shall be, here we go. So that's the part that we are talking about potentially changing, is that right? So the potential change is, uh, the town manager shall be chosen by the council without regard to political beliefs and solely upon the basis of his, her, um, if you wanna do that, I, I really respect gender things, but I don't think we have to do that, I believe we're at a greater place. Uh, we can say his and we don't know it's anybody, I don't, that's my opinion, uh, okay, Rod Curry's opinion, not right or wrong. Uh, his executive, his, her executive and administrative qualifications, at the time of his, her appointment, the town manager need not be a resident of the town or Commonwealth. And that's it. Uh, I know we, uh, had discussion about this and I think members are trying to find an alternative. Uh, I have had input from citizens, so I'll put it here, that the manager needs to live in this town, period. But that's what I've been hearing, your thoughts, council?
This is the only one that I've had citizens reach out to and say they disagree with. Uh, the biggest concern that I've taken was, or, or the consensus of what they have said is how can a town manager feel like they're, yeah, po- part of the town if they're not paying, you know, the same, the same things that, and that's, that's rightly so, uh, you know.
The president of the United States lives in America, generally speaking. Does that apply? I think, any thoughts on that, Jeff?
Uh, I think we just need to take out the pronouns altogether.
I do too. Uh, it's personally, any other thoughts about the cha- proposed change?
Uh, the town manager needs to live in the town.
Okay.
I thi- I think though we need to have some leniency as far as them, you know, at the hiring process, being able to get into the town.
Right.
And I, and I think we all saw that in the hiring process of, you know, you know, if, if we could give them a little bit of leeway as far as trying to move, especially a great distance or something.
Okay, okay.
That could be something that's put in a contract that doesn't actually.
I was gonna say, is that part of the charter, is that part of a contract?
That needs to be part of the contract.
Yeah, as long as you're actively looking, you know what I'm saying, I mean, somebody come here, now, of course, we can debate.
I agree, um, uh, with Richard on that and I agree with, I think we're all on the same page. I think that's more of a provision of a contract, for example, we don't put speed limits in the US constitution. That's different, okay? My thoughts.
I think the interpretation though was that if there's no you know, flexibility in what the charter says, the town manager must live in town.
When they start working.
When they, like, when they become the town manager, there's no.
Is that how you took it, John?
I believe that's what the discussion was when we.
That's what our discussion was with the, with, uh, the last hire. Sure was, and I think that was, you know, like I said, part of it.
At the time of his appointment.
Their appointment.
Uh, their appointment, whatever, the town manager need not be a resident of the town, I, I still think that's a part of a contract. I'm with Richard on that, that's right, right, I'm, I'm quiet.
It says, but during the tenure of the office shall reside within the town, so they can be appointed, but as soon as they start working, they have to live here.
That's right, and that could be judged, my take is, is let's suppose that we're hiring this person right here to be the manager and we want them to live in the town of Richlands, so I can't do it within three months a week, he can't work it for three months or whatever, you know, I'm just thinking of contractual things. I don't know, I think it's a detail.
I can go either way.
I just leave it, but that's up to council.
Like Mikey, that's the one that I've had more citizen input than they feel the town manager should live, but like John's saying, I would like to see us be able to add, to just add clarity, maybe the contract would be sufficient, but I know from other prospects that were interested in the position, they said to me.
Yeah, at the time, at the time, our legal representation was sort of hesitant on letting them be hired and the result. Sure.
And I would think six months would be, you know, they could be appointed and within work, but within six months must reside within the town.
Yeah, I talked, well, like I said, a couple, one of the localities said just as long as they were actively looking, that their council was fine with it and so was their legal representation as far as, you know, if, if a guy was working and, hey, he hadn't had a chance to move his family down there, but he was looking at several properties or trying to, you know, if it was, if it was a contingency base where they had to sell their house to buy the other house, you know, it might take a while.
Yeah, and you could have a, a family situation where, say they're in the spring semester and.
Sure, all kinds, yeah, all kinds of situations.
Makes it a hardship if you have to move the whole family and take the child out of school where he or she's getting ready to graduate from.
Would you like to add language?
Could you do it pursuant to whatever contract?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, just.
Pursue it to contract negotiations or?
Then that leaves us to, the council to not require him to live in town at all.
I mean, if that's the contract.
Do what now, I couldn't hear you, John.
If the council chooses to not require him to live in town at all, you're still taking that out. If that's what.
I think that, I think the consensus is that, I'm understanding council, is the manager needs to live in town. I think the detail is how long we would give, we, I mean, the council would give the manager to find a place to live here, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
I think, uh, again, I will defer to Richard's thinking, contract rather than put in three months, five months, but it's council's decision. Pursuant to, uh, contract.
Would that help, John, where it says that if shall or must live in the town limits? Pursue it, I don't know, I, I see what you're saying, it's kinda open ended.
Yeah, I, I think it's easier to get rid of it out of the charter and then it's up to councils, cause that's really what you're doing, you're just warned saying, this is up to council. So if you've deleted out of it, it's automatically up to council. Anyway, so it's the same result, if, unless you put a, a six months, a one year.
I wouldn't agree with you, John, but I don't. Because I like you, but I can't, because it really, it, the charter should say, because there might come a council, when Jeff's an old, old man and they say, oh my God, the man doesn't need to live here, we like him that much, but I think it does need to stay in the charter that he needs to live.
Saying, you know, if it says, you know, per the manager's contract, well, all that's doing is saying whatever council wants to do. It's not saying.
I, I don't understand, John.
Like if it says, you know, per the manager's contract, well, this council decides what that contract says.
All right, well, let's just leave it out, just leave it as it is.
Cause either all or, it's kind of an all or nothing unless you put a.
I follow you, I follow you.
It limits.
I get it, yeah, I get what you're saying. Strike it.
Is there a way to word it that, no, you don't think?
I think we're digging a hole.
Dig it out. I, I don't, I think if it doesn't provide more clarity.
We're not helping ourselves.
We're not helping ourselves, no.
It, we're well intentioned, but I don't think we're helping ourselves, honestly, for future.
But see, that's what we were saying, we're sort of limiting ourselves to hiring somebody that lives in the town already, cause they would be the only ones that could begin the job within, that, on the day that they're hired. That's the only limitation here.
Council's pleasure.
With this interpretation, sure.
What do you want, guys, Jeff? I'll just poll council. Jeff, what do you think?
Um, that means that I just leave, I just leave it as it is.
Doug?
Leave it.
Mary Ann?
I, I would still like to see the timeframe to give the town manager time to relocate within the town.
Could you do that as a resolution or not?
No, you could get rid of it and then do a resolution.
Yeah.
But if it's in the charter, you're-
If you strike it completely out of the charter, then you could do a resolution to require the town manager to live within town in three, three months, six months, whatever.
But if you leave it in the charter.
There's nothing.
There's no, it's just left up to interpretation at the time you hire someone.
But you're governed by the charter then, but if you completely strike it out of the charter.
It's up to each individual council, what they, whether they want the manager to live here or not.
If you don't have that in the charter whatsoever.
Then manager could live anywhere.
Manager could live anywhere, but you could make a resolution that required him to live in town.
Or not.
Or not.
But, and you could revoke the resolution, right? A council could or not?
Or not. It's a, it's a catch twenty-two, Jeff. Your thoughts, Mike?
I don't know.
I like the idea of, of providing clarity in regards to giving in time, but I don't, I, I don't see how we do it without
confounding the situation, not clarifying. Your thoughts, Richard?
Now, if we're going to specifically be governed by the charter, I, I agree with Mary Ann that we, I don't think a, a six month time period would be out of the question if we're going to be governed by the charter itself.
Okay, how would you like to reword that?
Be a resident within six months.
Okay. At the time, his/her appointment, the town manager needs to be a resident of the town, uh, within six months from the date of the contract? I'm just trying to figure it out.
The day, during, bef- I guess before sitting in office or the date of the hire, hire day or whatever.
It's gonna take a little polishing next thing.
It is, it is. But I, I agree with Mary Ann and it gives you-
Little leeway by charter.
Yeah.
If we can figure out, I, I-
I have a suggestion. I don't know that we can iron that out even in a work session. Uh, I don't think it's a bad idea, what you're saying, either one of you, but how we can clarify there.
I guess we, can we research other, other charters? I mean, what, I don't know what other towns do. I mean, I'm sure they have the same issues we do. There's probably, they're probably just a little more.
I did research and I can't tell you where, cause it's been weeks, but they do. And here's a thought. I'm just gonna try to guide as best I can. Everything doesn't have to be done at one time. It's a general assembly. We can move forward in future years with this. And I don't think we, puts it to bed necessarily at all. It just says, we're not clear of how to word it. I don't know how to word it. We need, if we're gonna have changes this coming year, we need to get those to our legislators ASAP. Am I right or wrong?
I guess that the only advantage would be, did anybody research? I didn't, about the cost?
No, it's, sorry, there's no cost.
No cost.
I don't think there's a cost to it.
So it wouldn't matter if we did a few changes this time and-
Yeah.
We'd have the support from your-
Your local legislators or state and, state senator and, and our delegate. I think that's how it's working.
You gotta make the changes now till you get to a position where you wish you had in this town, like, you know.
Cause very time consuming. I mean, it takes time.
It is time, and that's why I'm thinking we, as a council, uh, need to be very cautious in what we do and take our time as what we're instructing the general assembly to do. Of course, they get the legislative services to make sure wording is legal and proper. So I'm, council's pleasure. Leave it or not?
I'd have to think. I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but-
We can't vote on it. Without voting, we're just trying to give him direction.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. What is your direction, council? He needs to know.
I would maybe research a few other charters, if they have this requirement or not, as far as living right. I don't know if they do.
They pull Tassels. I know they just redid theirs, I think, a couple of years ago.
And talk to our town attorney as well.
I know he's reviewed it, so he didn't have any issue with any of them, but, you know, plans to kind of what direction council wants to go. But I can definitely pull Tassels and see if they have any wording that is similar or adjusted these items.
I, I was speaking to Frank there because, uh, I, I think the, the charge that I was referring to was during the codification of the code. And I think I may have got those confused as the codification and the charter change, because they were both about the same time. It took longer for the codification than it did.
That's expensive.
The codification, uh, have we ever actually completed it? American Legal Publishing from Cincinnati was doing it and we, I think we dropped the ball ten years ago on that.
It's time, probably time to do another one.
Well, I think that was part of the discussion on that. That's a different thing than this.
That's where the ten thousand came in as reason.
I gotcha. Yeah, that, I don't think there's a cost to this, uh, at all. I think this is a, uh, this is part of the job of the general assemblies to assist towns. So as, as speaking not, uh, with affirmative yes, but I don't think there is a cost to, associated with it, Mary Ann, and that's a good question. We always want to be conscientious about what we're trying to do with our money. So I suggest, uh, the, that we just hold on that and, but we do take it up, but that's only my thoughts. It's not opposing your thought nor yours. I'm just saying, I don't know how to word it. I don't know.
I, I'm literally just, if you're blocking out everything.
I suggest we're not ready to do it.
How do you want, when do you want to take it up? Do you want to take it up at a formal council meeting or do you want to continue this workshop to another day?
We have to another meeting. Let's move on to the next one.
I think that was the last one.
Uh, I'm just directing this, cause it's getting to be eight fifteen. Unless anybody objects to my moving on with it. Mary Ann, are you objecting? Uh, Mikey, are you? I'm, got to, cause we could debate words on it.
I mean, I heard everybody get tired.
Yeah. Mike, do you have any thoughts, objections on moving on? Uh, Richard?
No.
Jeff? Doug? Strike it for now. Strike it for now.
Look at the Tassels charter and also talk to our attorney.
Yeah, for now means temporarily. Take it out. We're not gonna vote on that in the next meeting. We're not ready.
For another workshop?
We can do it after the next meeting. I just simply don't have another night available, to be quite honest, personally speaking. And I'm not allowed to zoom, so that's the way it goes. To be quite honest with you. Okay. Ready, guys? Uh, is that the last one, John?
It is.
Okay. Members of council, uh, the next thing is ARPA funds. It's, uh, Roman numeral four C.
Here's a handout of just a few of the items. I believe I've already given you all a copy of this, probably two, three months ago. Um, essentially this kind of shows the funds that we're gonna receive from the, the ARPA. It's, I believe it's five point two million. And kind of how I anticipate, or I would recommend they need to be spent. Um, really, the target and the goal was to complete some projects we've already started on before we start looking at new projects or, you know, address some issues or needs, um, that, you know, if it were not for this money, that we would probably either struggle or not have, you know, the funds to get to. Um, so if you look at here, on here, the first one is the downtime revitalization grant. This is the one that Connie started. Ashley's continued that. Um, we're in the second round of that. And essentially it'll be about a million dollars that we'll get in grant money, but it's a matching grant. So, you know, we hope to have about six hundred thousand, I believe, in the businesses contributing. And for every dollar they spend, they'll get matched with the dollar, uh, to do renovations on the front of their buildings. But, you know, whatever's left, you know, the town, you plan on using for streetscapes or other things of that nature. So I recommend we set aside, you know, that five hundred thousand, even though we hope, you know, it's less, you know, if there's more money left over, you know, it's just more money we can, you know, invest into that, um, project. And then the next one is the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. This is, um, the item that Rick Chipwood mentioned a couple of months ago at a meeting, that, you know, there's a projection to become about twenty to thirty percent above budget. So with our current rates and our proposals that have been approved, um, this, that isn't taken into account this additional cost. So I recommend that we kind of sit on that money and hope that those projects come in below, you, where the projections are going right now. And any of that money that's, you know, not spent will be freed up for other projects. Uh, then number three is the drainage issue at Pizza Hut. I'm sure you're all aware of that. This is one that we'll probably never have the hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars to fix, and that's just my best guess of how much it would cost. But something, a project like that, not only good if it's the school, those businesses, um, people walk on the sidewalk, the road safety. You have so many different boxes you can check off on, you know, how that project would benefit, um, in that area. So that's one that I kind of put on there for consideration. Uh, number four was a small business revolving loan fund. Uh, I think that's something the IDA could start putting their focus towards. I think it really gave them a purpose and a goal to kind of do what they were intended to do. Uh, I would hope to be able to leverage that money to get additional grant funding through, use some other sources where we say, hey, we've committed you twenty-five thousand, they'll say, well, we'll chip in another ten or fifteen, so we can leverage that money for more benefit. Um, but I think that if we can get that started, uh, to kind of get the IDA moving in the direction that I think the council originally intended for that group. Uh, number five's kind of a random one, uh, but as you know, our police department doesn't currently have body worn cameras. I think something like that is imperative and extremely beneficial, especially, um, in today's society. Uh, I'm working with Chief Gilbert now to see what grants and funding opportunities are out there. So hopefully the, the eighty thousand dollars, uh, or seventy-five, what is it?
Fifty.
Fifty that I have in there. Hopefully it'll be less than that based on, you know, what grants, uh, we're able to get for that, um, type of equipment. Uh, then the next one's just the green space. As you know, they're working on the stage. That's just phase one. Phase two, uh, we're, uh, sending off the application for another fifty thousand dollars to finish the AstroTurf and the, you know, sidewalks and the projector and the screen and, you know, all those things that'll kind of round out that into a, you know, great area for, you know, our community to have events at. Um, so I put twenty-five thousand in there, even though I hope it's gonna be less than that, depending on what construction costs are. But I think, you know, continuing to finish that project is something that we should, you definitely focus on. You know, we don't want to have a stage out there without, you know, the area that really makes it, you know, the asset that it'll be for the community. Um, then the last one is the drive-through. Uh, we are working with T and L to get that out for bid. As you know, we have, you know, only a certain amount of COVID relief funds to pay for that. Um, and as construction prices go up, I anticipate that it will likely be more than we have, uh, currently allocated for that. So I wanted to put some funds in there just for that overage. Um, then the next item is, um, what Jeff kind of started discussing at our last meeting, the renovations to the rec park. Uh, we're still kind of looking at what the scope potentially could be for that, if that's something council supports. Um, and then we look at, you know, how we're gonna fund that. Uh, there's some different options, but, um, you know, then uh, below that, I kind of, you know, the Greenway, phase one, that's something that we'd like to do. Um, but, you know, the cost of that is so large, I don't think we're ready to move forward with that quite yet. Um, then people have mentioned, you know, a new pool splash pad, uh, but some of those upgrades could potentially be in with the project Jeff's, uh, proposing, depending on, uh, what the costs are for each of those items that, uh, really would rely on the rec commission to see what their recommendations are for the needs um, out there. But, uh, this is just kind of where we are. If you look at the bottom, um, the total cost is right above what we have budgeted, but if you take out the contingency, we're really close to being able to do those, uh, items. But it's really kind of contingent on direction from council. Um, so I wanted to have some discussion on, you know, maybe these items. Are there other items that you feel are, you know, more important, because we kind of start prioritizing, you know, how these funds will be spent. But a lot of it's contingent on, you know, the cost of the water and wastewater plant. You know, they come in at two million dollars over budget. We'll actually free up two million dollars that we can do, you know, a lot more with. Um, but the focus of these funds has to do for, like, economic development, uh, infrastructure, um, things of that nature. So it is kind of limited, but there are some odd things like the body worn cameras that I've been told that you could use the funds for.
So I have a-
Thank you, John, for putting this together.
Yeah, thank you. This is awesome. I have one, I have one thing that's gonna be incredibly important that was just brought to my attention. And that is, um, a significant amount of inability for the fire department to communicate with 911. And I believe that is-
We should have had her read those orders since I left. We could have gotten to those in five minutes, couldn't we? What if we can do that next time?
I think we're either gonna run into a radio issue, or we're either gonna run into a repeater issue, and that's something that we're gonna have to, um, look at and maybe put some money towards. And I feel like, uh, if we're, if, if twenty-five percent of the time our fire department is unable to communicate with 911, we've got a serious, a serious problem. Serious method problem, I will do completely away with the 911, in my opinion. If our fire department can't communicate to who they're supposed to. So I'm, I'm looking, I'm getting more details in regards to that, but that needs to be more in line with ninety percent, ninety-five percent.
Mike, what are you saying? Do we need to allocate some of this money for that?
Once I have more details, I think it would be very, very important for us to allocate some money to some upgrade to make sure that our emergency services can communicate with 911.
Is there, now, if we leave this as it is, John, I'm listening to what you're asking for, uh, how much money did we get?
I believe it's five, five point two, somewhere in there.
Okay, if we leave this as it is, have we, would, if it were to be as it is, would all that money be allocated?
I believe so.
So we would have to take away something, somewhere, in order to do what he's wanting.
Yeah, and we can look, you know, see if there's grant opportunity, you know, we'll, we can look into that and see what.
Is that, are you following me, Mike?
Cause I believe that would be, that would be filed under infrastructure, but, you know, we have to make sure that it is something that these funds are eligible for. I would think it would be, uh, and then we can look at, you know, what other grant opportunities are out there.
What, what Mr. Chipwood say was the timeframe on knowing those calls?
Uh, we're putting the, uh, one of them out for bid, hopefully in the next month or two.
Oh, soon, yeah.
So hopefully within four to five months, we'll know.
Could I speak?
You may.
I mean, to me, why can't we bring the community in and let them have a say on what they think we need? We, I mean, s- some of this stuff we might need, I mean, a soccer field, um, over a million dollars. The whole town is crumbling. They've got flooding in Hidden Valley. We can't even get, uh, Orange Street straightened out. Uh, that, we have so many problems in town and to put money on a soccer field over a million dollars when we've got so many other priorities? I think if you talk to the citizens, they would have, they would kind of look at this and say baloney. Uh, we've got more severe problems that we may need to spend on this money on. And I s- say the rec, seventy-five percent of the people who use the rec are out of town. Why, I mean, if you want, if you want a soccer field or you want the rec, why don't you go to the county? Why does the town always have to foot the bill for everything for the whole county? And shortchange the citizens and which they need help with other problems. To me, I would pitch this in a waste can, bring some citizens in and say, what do you want? Do you want a soccer field or do you want, these problems you've got, that you're flooding in Hidden Valley or they're flooding on Orange Street, or we need a new police station, we need a, we need so many other things besides this. I don't, that's, I can't, I can't go along with this, but of course I'm gonna be in the minority. But when you build a soccer field, you're gonna have some backlash, I promise, from the citizens.
Okay, any other thoughts?
I think with, like, like the four point one million, uh, for the
Water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater, um, the citizens are not gonna see that tangibly, you know, they don't see what we did with that money. These other items, and hopefully it will be closer to the two million than the four million, so we can do some of the things that Councilman Rat was talking about. But I think some of the other items are important because the citizens will be able to see the green space, the drive-through, the, the upgrades to the rec park, the drainage issue at Pizza Hut that we've had for years.
Those are words that John spoke to me recently.
Richard, if you've got to talk to those people in Hidden Valley and they're flooding out, what do you think's gonna be more important, the Greenway or, you know?
I don't have a problem having public hearing. I know Tassel did that with their ARP money and, uh-
Why can't we have a committee of citizens? This is a chunk of money that the town will never have again. And we need, you can explain to citizens, we need upgrade. They want, they're not dummies. They understand if you explain it to them. Why does council always have to think that we know everything and we can't go to the citizens and say, what do you think? Why does council always have to think that we know everything and we can't go to the citizens and say, what do you think? That's, I mean, Tassel did it. Why can't we?
Tassel did it ba- based on a public hearing, and I'm I'm.
Well, no, they they formed a committee.
And they also had a public hearing.
Okay, why can't we form a committee, point some members of the community and see what they think are priorities instead of what we think always think? This is a one time thing that will never have a chance again, and so many people have come and begged for help. And we turned a blind eye because we said we didn't have any money or we couldn't do it. Now we have the money and we're gonna piss it off for a bunch of stuff that we don't need. Excuse my language.
That's all right. It's a common word. Uh question, as to just take just a little bit of detail here. As far as the uh money that is proposed to be set aside to cover the water and wastewater uh potential debt overage that we can have that, how do you, are you okay with that?
Sure, I'm all, that's unnecessary, but the rest of this stuff, we have so many priorities other than this stuff. A soccer field, that's one part, a small segment of the community, and seventy five percent live out of town. We're gonna take millions of dollars. It's not gonna take a million to build that soccer field. It's gonna, when you do it, it'll cost two million because the cost you'll see will go up. How are you gonna explain that to all these people that have all these flooding problems and problems all over the community and you're setting a soccer field up in a holler that probably ten percent of the whole population might use?
Doug, yeah, uh here's a thought.
Yeah.
Uh we all have our passions and dreams, everybody here, and I don't want to rain on anybody's parade. Yours, Jeff's, no one's. It's not the right thing to do. That being said, nor Mike's, he has a lot of passions. He tells me a lot, passionate, passionate. I get it. So we all have passions, so it's not unique. That being said, uh I don't know about a committee. Frankly, I just don't know. I'd have to, I know people on Tassel on their council, whatever. I could talk to them, see what they did. What about a public hearing? Does anybody have a feeling about a public hearing?
I I don't have any issue with public hearing.
How are we gonna do that? I mean, John, I think you'd have to pull out some of this that I feel, I speak for council and I can't do it. I I think this money that we need to reserve for uh water wastewater is essential. We don't want to, you know, come up short. So that's uh only the mayor's office's opinion, but um I know people are pa- I've been passionate about things a lot, just to use your word, Mike, and uh I get it. So that being said, how do you feel about a public hearing for the rest of it, Mike?
Um I I would argue that there's a couple more things on here that should be added to the wastewater. I think the downtown revitalization grant is something that we've been pursuing for a long time.
Okay.
And we've already, we were already pursuing that anyway.
Okay.
And this is an opportunity to really, from one end of the town to the next end of the town, sidewalks, lighting, everything that would.
To continue what was done in the year two thousand. It basically.
Exactly. It it's a, you know, different stage, different, different section. Connie Allen done amazing on that, and we're gonna continue that. And I think that is incredibly important.
Okay. Mary Ann, your thoughts of on a public hearing?
I think a public hearing is a great idea. I I think I'd like to know if Tassel did the committee. I'm not doubting that they did, but I think that's why we are elected by the citizens and then citizens come to us with their ideas. Because how do you choose a committee? How is that equitable? How, I don't know how you choose them. So that's where like I welcome citizen input. They elected us. They need to.
That does become problematic.
But there are some things on here. Um I am very much in favor of the drainage issue at Pizza Hut. I I can't even begin to tell you how many citizens I've had conversations with about that over and over and over. And, you know, when we would bring it up to Mr. Taylor, we simply didn't have the money. So.
It was the money.
So I, that's a big one with me. I also like a small amount of money to the IDA because I have people tell me, well, the IDA can't really accomplish anything. We don't have any money, you know? So I think giving them some incentive would help the IDA tremendously. It's not, it's not a lot of money. And, you know, of course, I'm gonna, I'm gonna differ with Doug. I'm I'm very passionate about recreation and I think Tassell County absolutely positively should help us. We've met with them. They just will not. And they told me if they help Richlands, Tassell has the same problem. A lot of people outside of the Tassells Town limit, so I'm not optimistic that we'll ever get help from the county and it's not just a soccer field. It's multipurpose. And sure, I would love to have everything in town. I think more visible. But we don't have that large a space to do the huge level multipurpose playing field. And again, I'm very passionate. I think youth are our future and.
What kind of crowd was down there tonight?
Well, I was gonna say, if you, it makes me nervous because there are, it's huge. And parking, you know, I just pray all the time and people are respectful. They go slow, but if someone does it, we've got some liability. So if we could make improvements, which would, parking would be included, would make a huge difference.
So I'm, don't mean to.
Yeah, and and that's not the whole one point two million for soccer the way John's laid it out, and I'll wrap it up with that. I like the fact that, you know, he's looking at it out of the balloon uh over ten years. I think that's been very creative and I compliment you for that.
So uh how do you feel about a public hearing, Mary Ann?
I'm all in favor of that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Richard? Any other comments on a public hearing? Do I, does council give direction to the uh manager to have a public hearing? And we'll have to e- we'll have to extract what's available based on what council.
I guess Mike, a question, what what's the current proposal that will be up for the public comment? Do you want me to remove the water and wastewater?
Uh I think water and wastewater are important and the rest of it, I'll, it's up to council. I I mean, we all have things. No, it's the, what's available.
I just don't want to say it's against five point two million when if we've already taken out the four point.
No, I'll pick my mind for five point two. That's what I want, but we can't do that, and we get that, John. That's, here's a suggestion, and if I'm wrong, please chip in what you think. I think we need to move forward and keep the money for the water and wastewater. I think the downtown revitalization, we've made a commitment to that already. We need to continue it. Uh uh let's see here. Uh the IDA, we've talked about it. The drainage issue, we need to take care of that. I fell off the sidewalk into that humongous hole where the water pipe is when I was running. It was not funny. And uh I'm just telling you, it is dangerous. I'm serious. It was a terrible morning. Um so uh the body cameras, I think that's essential. Uh the green space, I don't know. We've got a lot going on there. Can we complete it without the phase whatever, whatever, just saying? Drive through, don't know. Uh rec park, uh it seems to be something Doug says up for debate. I like the ideas, but it doesn't mean I represent everybody by any shape, form, or fashion. All right, uh so there you have it. New Pool, I don't know where to go with all that. Have to have some money. There's no point in having a public hearing.
That's right. I mean, there's no, there's no lack of shortages for great ideas.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, everybody's got great ideas and and I'm sure, you know, a public hearing will bring that to light.
Well, uh I I referenced the word passionate. I've heard it a lot. I'm passionate, passionate. I I get that. We all have passions, everybody sitting at this table, and so does the community. If we want to hear what they have to say, they have to have some money they can work with that they could suggest that we consider. Know what it's about. Okay. Well, we could just have it all right there for them to comment on, and we could take public comment on the whole thing.
The only thing about that is I don't like the contractors being able to know that we set aside four point one million extra, but.
Well, we're on TV, aren't we?
Really matter.
I mean, I'm just saying. Are we? Are we? Are we not? I mean, truth, I get what you're saying, John, but we're not playing with a a closed hand right now. We're open.
So I'll just leave everything as is?
I would.
All right. We'll try to get a.
Just because we have it there doesn't mean they'll get it.
Will I be enough notice?
Okay.
For if we don't public hearing at the next council meeting, how many days ahead it have to be?
Two weeks.
We don't have two weeks. So it'll have to be the next council meeting.
Well, today's what, Tuesday?
I think.
Um no, this is Monday night. Can you get it in there tomorrow? Uh I believe tomorrow will be sufficient for a newspaper, would it not be?
Be thirteen days. Cause the days that we can't get it until Wednesday.
I would suggest you call the attorney and confer with him.
We'll do it as soon as we can.
ASAP.
At a regular schedule.
Is that okay with council to instruct the town manager ASAP? If we can get it for October, let's do it. If we can't and we're a day short, we cannot do it.
Then we'll schedule another workshop at the next council meeting.
After, please. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh who's yes? Richard, yes, second. Uh anybody opposed to it? All favor, yes. Richard, done. Thank you, everybody.
That's why I took her.
For heaven, I only got four players and what um he decide about.